Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Transport and Connectivity Policy Committee. Particularly a warm welcome to all the members of the public who've taken the time and trouble to come here today and be part of witnessing democracy. And I'd like to welcome the members of the committee. And please, could you maybe just go on the back row and in the front row and introduce yourselves, please? Don Alexander, councillor for Alden Mount and Lawrence Western Ward.
Tim Redden, councillor for Bristol East. Cassel, councillor for Southmead.
Councillor Josh Park substituting for Nick Coombs and Brittany Thomas.
Councillor David Wilcox from Lockley's Ward.
Councillor Emma Edwards from Ashley Doward.
I'm Rob Dryer, councillor for George West Ward.
I'm Graham Morris, the councillor for Stockwood Ward. And I'm Ed Clardon, councillor for Wimbledon Hill and Chair of this committee. In the event of a fire alarm, there is no fire drill plan, so if you're planning on the town, please, you can come by the lobby area and main front of the city hall, turn right, all down the ramp, towards the cathedral, and it's empty, quite busy in the front of the cathedral. We've got apologies, as councillor Clark has said, from councillor Nicholas Coombs and to the justice substituting for Morgan. I also always say this to the clerks, that if there's anything that you're not quite sure about at the minute, please say so as soon as you can, because if you're not sure right now, then we're going to have a really difficult job remembering what it was in several weeks' time. So please feel free to stop us and make sure that we're clear about what we're missing. Do committee members have any interest to declare in relation to the items of business on the agenda? Any requests will be recorded in this. I'll take that as a no. I move the minutes of the previous meeting of the committee held on the 11th of July as a correct record. Will someone please second that, please? Graham Morris, thank you. Are you content to confirm that this is a correct record to be signed by me as the Chair?
I am.
And any other, anyone else? Cassel.
I just wanted to say these excellent minutes. On the agenda item seven, electrical power supplies, it says, 'Rental costs would be cheaper as well.' I would have liked to have known why, maybe because, the reason in the minutes, just a little bugbear of mine. The agenda item seven, the last minutes, electrical power supplies, summary point four, it says, 'Rental costs would be cheaper as well.' I would have liked to have known why they've been cheaper, just as a record.
So does that mean that we defer in the minutes until we...
No, I'm happy the minutes are, it's just a general comment for minute taker in the future. I'd say excellent minutes, but just...
Okay, so we can sign, I can sign them off at the end of this meeting as correct, but just wanted to dot the eyes across the teeth in the future. Thank you, Cassel. Next item on the agenda is chairs and members. I have no announcements. Let's move on to the public forum. We've got thirty minutes in the public forum, given that we've got a number of people here who want to answer questions. I've allowed twenty minutes of questions, and we're going to start a clock now. And then we've got another ten minutes of statements, because I think that's probably the fairest way to allocate time. So first off, have we got Nigel Bryant here? Okay, next is Chris Witfield, EV charging terrorist hounds. Now, I think what we've got, I think we've had the answers to the questions published. I don't know if they're displayed on the, I don't know if you've managed to see that, Chris, or if you joined an office to answer the question.
I have, yes.
Okay. So they are published and they're on the screens, particularly ones in front of you. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that, Chris.
Yes, I have. One question, please. What was the councillor's objection to using a gully-based system to charge an EV outside his house?
So what's the objection to using a gully-based system to charge an EV outside his house? And I'm hoping that an officer might be able to just talk to that. And I think it's largely reassuring that you've given the answer, but you might just want to explain that in person, please, Shaun. Thank you.
So, basically, there's a number of safety issues around gully-based charging. We're looking at trials which are happening in their cities to see if they're successful. But it's not just about the trip hazards and cars itself, it's the public taking responsibility for that in relation to making sure that there isn't a hazard across the highway. And also the electrical installation, is it, that electrical cable on the highway safe in relation to the electrical regulations? Again, it's a challenge. So we are looking forward at the moment. Our policy is that we can't allow this at the moment. We are looking at trials which are being done by other authorities around the country to see, now, instead of spending good money ourselves on the trial, let's see what others are doing, and then try and learn from that and then perform it through the proposals in the future. But we've also got lots of investment going into community charging places, like land charges coming forward, there's charging in your supermarkets nowadays and things like that. So it's all about looking at that wider end.
Okay, if you can tell us one of those cars or vehicle.
I'm sorry, I don't know the times count on those trials itself, but we are, basically, I'm sure and others like that, we're leading that kind of element.
Thank you, Shaun, thank you, Chris. Dave Ridgwell, we've got a number of questions. Dave, I'm allowing up to two questions. You had the answers in writing, you can see them on the screen. If you want to ask supplementary, you've got up to two questions that you can ask.
Yeah, so I would. So on question five, really, question five is most concerning situation. We all asked a few before, which I think you may remember, I'm not sure. Hasn't met since the change on the first of September. Formerly, the panel, all the board, to sign off the bus services, changes in the city, some of which are severe in the east of the city. Particularly in here, it's mistaken, forced to park with evening services. I wonder what action or comments the city council would make in the form of WACCA. But the board is supposed to be a statutory body on the panel by the DFT for basic money, what a serious situation. So I wonder if this has been brought to the attention of WACCA by the city council?
I don't know if any officers want to answer that.
So we do push WACCA to engage as much as possible with secondary, so that issue would be again...
And I'd like to raise your head that question, Dave, that I think, as Chair of Black Street in last year, I was aware that there's maybe improvements in collaboration that the Northern Authority could put in place. But I don't think it'd be appropriate to divulge private conversations at the moment, because we're trying to do improvements through consent and...
So I just think the point is, there's a lot of money involved in this, and to better the basic money, you have to perform a formal power and a formal board meeting, which the DFT expects. So I just flag the issue. The other point I wanted to raise is, again, out on the street tonight, we have a certain amount of passenger information, which is completely outdated. And we just come from Templeman Station and interchange, gives more wrong public traffic information to passengers. Again...
Dave, can you turn into questions? There are a lot of...
The question is, there was a change of timing on the first of September, and we both teams went out to change the timing of information, lots of which is outdated. Was there any indications, or was there any feedback to WACCA to remove outdated information from the traffic public? So why do we map the plans of outdated on the bus stops not taken down and removed? Why are we still left there nine days later? That would be brutal, but this is a public service and it's not the initiative of passengers.
I think the answer to that is that this is a responsibility for WACCA, and I think you're really neatly asking that of the Northern Authority. Obviously, the city council are unhappy to take away an action, to raise this with the relevant directors of WACCA.
Thank you.
Okay. So next, we have Ian Pomerant. Ian, you've got answers to your three questions. Just waiting for the mic to get to you. Ian's over on the right there, oh, my right, you're there. So hopefully you've seen the answers to the three questions that you submitted, Ian. So if you want to ask supplementary questions, then please do that.
Thank you, Chair. So in relation to question six, yes, I've read the answer, and my supplementary questions in relation to that are, they're going to comment about the need for, to avoid excessive structural works. The developer took home this site on the understanding that they needed to reinstate and improve the concrete work, and so they factored that into their costs. The variation route that's been put forward in late planning application is actually cheaper, as we understand it, than the original route. So I don't understand why there would be a requirement to help the developer to avoid costs that they accepted when they entered the concrete in the first place.
Yeah, so if we gave the full with three, it requires a fairly significant structure, which has a lot of cost to it, and also has ongoing costs for the authority. So we would then have to be maintaining it in perpetuity. And you'll be aware from other papers and other stories that come in, we have a lot of issues with structures around the city, in terms of the state of the asset, of the walls on the concrete, for example. And so we have to be realistic about if we can maintain it going forwards. It's a short stretch of, kind of twenty to twenty-five metres. We could design it as segregated infrastructure, as a segregated side, or as a segregated footpath. We can still have those discussions going forwards. We currently think in a shared path over that short section may be the most appropriate approach, but we could have it segregated as well. It's not so much about letting the developer off, it's about finding a pragmatic solution that we can maintain on term as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm actually meeting with Ron Syke next Tuesday, so I'll discuss it further. My second question is more food principle. If the planning application said that something was agreed with the public, how can officers preempt the due process by indicating to a developer that something is agreed in advance?
So the developer will engage with us in a discussion to say, here are issues, we've given viewers as officers, it's for the planning department to make a decision as to whether to approve it or not. But we will go out there and discuss an issue with them and see if we can come to a solution.
Okay, thank you.
Ian, I'd like to just address your festival way question, which is that I am concerned about this, and it obviously is extent to planning permission, so I'm looking to see what wiggle room there is for us to contact and work with the developer to try and make the adjustments that you had pointed out are needed.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think that really was why so important to hear, but I just had a start.
So I really can't promise anything, but I am investigating what wiggle room we've got, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, hello. Just behind you, yeah. So again, we've got, we've had the three questions, you've got three answers, which have been published in writing, so supplementary questions, please, Matt?
Okay. Question nine, I pointed out, the Campbell Road Bus Gate issued more than fifty thousand mandatory charge notices, and by the end of the year, there are calls to hit sixty-seven thousand. I asked, I call it, transport officers that consistently said the signage is all correct. So I asked, if that's the case, can the officers please explain why this installation has been such a catastrophic failure? The answer didn't actually even try to answer the question that I asked. So I don't want to raise a supplementary question on it, unless someone wants to answer the actual question, but I don't see that as being a supplementary question.
Or shall I go to the next one?
I think the answer, you may not feel it's addressed the question, but I think it is in order.
Well, it doesn't explain why sixty-seven thousand people are riding through that thing. It's not an answer, it's just, it's just on the subject. We should really know one then.
Yes, if you'd like to ask a supplementary question, please do, but I don't think that the answer's going to change really.
Okay. Question ten is about bus gates signage review. Four months ago, I submitted a document titled, 'The Home Art and Twenty-Five Regularities for the Signage of Campbell Road Bus Gate'. Transport officers told everybody that the signage was correct, so the council has continued to prosecute another twelve thousand people since then. Since then, councillors lost three cases at the Traffic Management tribunal. In the officer's response, they said, 'The bus gate is clearly a bit automotricus', and they stopped the give-way mark near the exit of Gasbury Road. Actually, today, I've got the decision notice, it's been by the new case, which was specifically about Gasbury Road again in daylight, and specifically addressed the issue of whether you see the bus gate and stop the give-way sign, and the adjudicator decided that it can't, or is not well enough for its account. So the statement there has been debunked yesterday. And the statement court says, 'The council has lost three cases in very specific circumstances. The specific circumstances were that the sign in Gasbury Road was obscured by the wall, and the sign in Haverhill Place is obscured by a thirty mile per hour sign, and both of those are in certain features. So they've been there all along and affected every person who exited from those two junctions.' So the supplementary question is about the final part. The answer says, 'Officers are reviewing the trial's overview of the existing signage, and if appropriate, will consider installing additional signage.' So apparently, officers are reviewing the signage. So my question is, when have they been doing that? Is it ongoing, has it already happened, is it about to happen? What are the dates of the reviewing of the signage? And as you know, the Traffic Management Act 2004 says that if the authority is reviewing the signage at a bus gate, it is supposed to suspend enforcement during that period. So what is the date of the reviewing of the signage?
Shaun, I'm glad to see you here. As we've said previously, the signage is in accordance with the regulations in accordance with us. We're happy with signage, one case is based on the signage. However, there are circumstances where we feel maybe, due to some of the issues raised, we might put additional signage in, even though it's not technically required, in our view. I personally have gone to site to take a look at that personal sign at Gasbury Road, and an additional sign has already gone in on that road in the last of the days, so we advance more. And a further sign is going in on the opposite side, which will be illuminated, but we need to change a lamppost, so it's programmed for the twenty-third of September, hopefully. So I personally, as the head of IBOs, have gone down to review this, and as far as I'm concerned, the signing is legitimate. I appreciate the trial agreement doesn't really mean everything, however, what we've done is act on some of the concerns raised.
So you reviewed the signage?
I haven't reviewed the signage, I've added additional signage to make sure that it's robust.
You didn't need to add additional signage, there is plenty of signage, it doesn't need to be the right size, colour, and the right attention.
As we've said previously, that, in our review, is correct for red.
Matt, I think they have two supplementary questions.
I didn't have the first one, but I answered everything. I'll just quickly do the last one then, which is about premature reminder letters. When someone is issued with a notice of rejection, this isn't just Campbell Road, this is all bus gates and bus lanes, when someone's issued with a notice of rejection letter, they have four weeks to appeal to the Traffic Management tribunal. The council is sending letters out three weeks later, telling people that they have lost their right to appeal and must now pay the fine, otherwise it will be increased by fifty percent. The council is lying to people and misleading them in order to induce them to pay their fine when they still have another week left to appeal to the Traffic Management tribunal or to pay their fine. So the...
Can you turn this into a question, please, Matt?
Okay. Let's see. Oh, we've got, it's just the same question I asked in the third day, because, again, they did transfer it. The Traffic Management tribunal upheld the case on this great basis, saying it was a procedural in propriety. So in my question, I said, 'How long has the Park and Services Department been operating in this illegal manner, and how many drivers have been misled and defrauded in this way?'.
So do you... The officers feel that they answered the question, Matt?
They didn't even acknowledge that they had sent a letter a week too early. They just explained that this is an extra letter, that it isn't part of the statutory process, this is an extra thing they concocted, that they are sending to people and telling people a week too early that they don't like this climate. And it isn't just one case, I've got several cases, I'm in several rounds, and they've been going on for years.
So just to answer your question, it's not a legal, it's not a statutory letter. It's part of our ethical debt recovery policy that we warn people that their time is coming to an end. Now, we absolutely have taken on board that, you know, we should be sent that in twenty-eight years, we've corrected that. However, nobody incurs any more costs, nobody is penalised in any way by having that. The idea around that non-statutory letter is to let people know that your period of fifty percent reduction is coming to an end. If you'd like to pay it within that period, you need to do so. Now, we could send that twenty-eight years, and we are going to do that, however, that does mean their period of fifty percent reduction has already expired. So under our rest of debt policy, we were trying to ensure that people didn't run and run, but avoid them entering to having to say the one hundred percent, well, we could avoid that.
Well, the half price thing expires twenty-one days, and about twenty years, I hope people have lost their right to appeal.
Matt, I thought John...
Councillor Scott, that is right, that is, so they were sent a week too early, that is correct. So we are, and it does affect other cases, and we are looking into that, and we will come back with information about how many, but it's not a huge number, but it does affect other cases. But they were sent a week too early, albeit, actually, that's it, right, it's an informal, non-statutory letter, but they were sent a week too early, so they were misleading that effect.
It's official now for the Traffic Management tribunal to rule that it's a procedural in propriety.
Okay, Matt. The other thing I'd like to update is, I've had a word with officers, and as you know, we'll be introducing more bus gates. So I've asked the officers of a lessons learned approach, about all of the bus gates we've put in to date, to make sure that when we're rolling out more bus gates, that we've learned the lessons, and we're making it really obvious to the people of Bristol and beyond where bus gates are and how they, to try and make sure that they serve their purpose, which is improve traffic, improve road pollution, cut congestion, whilst making sure that people observe the environment. So certainly, some of the lessons that we've learned from your very thorough pieces will be feeding into that. I'm not going to go into review, because that might get us confused, but lessons learned exercise in all of that, that can be fed back to our engineering and design colleagues to take forward and make sure we've got Bristol doing this, which is correct, and takes on the learning to take. Thank you very much. I think that's the end of the questions, so let's move on to the statements. I'm going to be, we've got quite a lot of people here who want to make statements, so I'm going to be quite strict on one minute, only to make it clear. So, Dave Ridgwell, you're the first up, and you're on notice, please, that I'm going to be very strict about one minute, so you can say as quick as you can.
I'll make a brief, brief, brief comment. I welcome the bus review, looking at the network, and of course, actually, the sign authority, that is their legal statutory duty, but also you provide authorities with special measures, I think it's very appropriate, my biggest concern is to make sure the providing authorities in there is engaged in that process, because it's a statutory role of their authority. On rail, that's a better story, obviously, we've got Ashkenham station, that means twenty-seven to Shropshire, and that we can't be on to make it, which is good news. Metro West is going very mad, but I do want some support and help. South Gloucestershire not, not strong with planning permission for every station. And if we don't get that through, come spending review, or we're also trying to import its headline, we could get it knocked back by some people heading in. So I would ask you to talk to South Gloucestershire, sort that planning permission out of every station, they're on far too long and conditions, because if we haven't earned permission, we're going to be in difficulty.
Thank you.
So that's...
Thanks very much, David. I'll give you a point second. Ian, I believe you don't want to speak to your statement. I'm going to move to councillor Mark West and David, this is Sue Maggs, councillor John Landris, Julie Leepers, and that takes us to Steve Smith. So, one minute, starting, starting the moment, starting now.
Thank you, Chair. Hello, I'm off to see you again, most of you already are there, but I was councillor for West End East, and Sean Mann. I'm going to be straight about the district car park charging proposal, particularly the course of Westbury Village. First, I'm just challenging the assertion in the report that this is something becoming a cost pressure. These are car parks that have never generated any income, and there is no improvement this year either, because we may take out of this year's budget, that's it. Maybe, but the point of all to make is, you have before you, I made fifty-four statements that come from residents, from businesses, from churches, from the health centre, from voluntary organisations, community groups, from current councillors, from former councillors, and not one of them thinks that this would provide any benefit. Every single one has got the damage this would cause to Westbury Village. And all I can do at this stage is to urge you, please, to consider what those people have to say, people who live there, who work there, who care for the areas, who use care for all the laws where you live, who are telling you that this will cause immense damage, and please do not impose this damaging proposal on our village, and we'll be able to go back to the paper. South Gloucestershire not, not strong with pound commission or, uh, every station. And if we don't get that through, come spending review, or we're also trying to import its headline, we could get it knocked back, uh, by certain people heading in. So I would ask you to talk to South Gloucestershire, sort that pound commission out of every station, they're on far too long and conditions, because if we haven't earned admission, we're going to be in difficulty.
Thank you.
So that's, thanks very much.
Thanks very much, Dave. I'll give a point second. Ian, I, I believe you don't want to speak to your statement, um, I'm going to move to the councillor Mark West and David Smith, councillor John Landris, Julie Leepers, and that takes us to Steve Smith. So, uh, one minute, starting, starting the moment, starting now.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'd like to see you again, most of you are here, but I was councillor of Westbury East and Sean May. I'd like to ask you about the district car park charging proposal, particularly the course of Westbury Village. Um, first, I'm just challenged the assertion in the report that this is something becoming cost pressure. These are car parks that have never generated any income, um, and there is no improvement this year either, because we may take out of this year's budget specifically. Maybe, uh, the point of all today is you have before you, I made fifty four statements that come from residents and businesses, and churches, and the health centre, voluntary organisations, uh, community groups, recovery councils, reform councils, and not one of them thinks that this would provide anything. Every single one has got the damage this would cause to, uh, to Westbury Village. And all I can do at this stage is to urge you, please, to consider what those people have to say, people who live there, who work there, who care for the areas, who use care for all the laws where you live, who are telling you that this will cause immense damage. And please do not impose this damaging proposal on our village, and we'll be able to protect the public.
Thank you, Steve. Um, I'm going, there's a lot, uh, I, I have indication that there's a lot of, uh, people who've made statements, almost all of you on parking charges in Westbury-on-Trim, and I think, believe the next one, is, is anyone here, uh, or councillor Gooch, would you like to speak next? And again, if you could try and keep it to a minute, I'd be happy.
I didn't think you'd like to get to me, as I was forty something, uh, thirty something. Um, basically, uh, yes, it's about the fact that this, um, car park, uh, in Westbury-on-Trim serves the doctor's surgery. Uh, in fact, uh, the, um, resourcing, uh, of the car park was actually done, um, by the doctor's surgery when it was built, and, um, it would be the only doctor's surgery where people would have to pay to actually attend the surgery, uh, were it to be, um, implemented. Uh, it also, um, serves a number of, uh, two churches and a community centre, um, lots, lots of, uh, local community groups that are attended by children and the elderly and the lonely, there's the, um, Alcoholics Anonymous meetings there, there's, um, things for, um, bitter matter, uh, all sorts of, uh, community groups, uh, using the facilities, um, most churches and community centres have that right parking, but in Westbury-on-Trim, both the churches, the community centre, and the doctors and pharmacies also, uh, use this particular car park. Um, there's also-
Councillor, if you could wrap up now, that was already been written, Mark.
We're, we're worried about moving, um, parking over onto the street, or, or parking just, um, literally just deciding to shop elsewhere. The, the businesses are already struggling, uh, after the loss of couple of banks and, um, uh, Critical's Way is only six minutes away, um, and now the middle, there are car parks very close by, so for the sake of the businesses and the community, please don't impose the charges.
Thank you. Okay, um, there's a lot more about, uh, is there anyone else here who specifically comes to talk about parking charges in Westbury-on-Trim? Because I've got some other statements here, but they're not about that. Okay, I'm just making sure that, because there are a lot of them, making sure that if anyone has come along, we've given a bit of hearing. Um, yes, you're on the list, uh, uh, in a minute. Uh, Matt, you're up again to make your statement. And again, if we can try, you, you've had quite a lot by the time, so I'm going to be quite strict now on one minute, if you can summarise your statements, I think you've already.
Sure. Um, uh, four months ago, I highlighted the way that, uh, many people have had a very high probability of multiple fines because they drove that way every day before we received their first letter. In response, councillor Claretton, the chairman, uh, emailed executive director John Smith and council leader Tony Dyer. One clear line that is coming through is how unfair it is that people are getting up to a dozen fines, as it takes about two weeks for the first one to come through, by which time they're carried along. They are being forced to pay them all. This feels wrong, and I'd like to see what we can do about this, please. Um, several other emails discuss this subject between officers, and the next morning, John Smith responded to his, well, actually, the same to the first day, and Claretton wrote to colleagues of U S O regarding the issue around hospital tickets and potential refunds, noting this could set a precedent for future sites that would have an actual resource impact. The next day, John Smith responded, I'm in support of the approach that emphasis should be on giving relief for hospital tickets if reasonable argument, person was on their previous offences when occurring further ones, but doing this on a case-by-case basis. So within twenty four hours, the transport chair's bottom meeting number request was watered down and bastardised, so that multiple PCNs would only be cancelled in the event that those had been made a complaint and specifically indicated-
Matt, you've read that, well, you've a minute now, if you can wrap up.
Well, you can see the last, yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have read that, so, uh, and so many further on, we've got one, two, three, four more statements, if you could really just try and summarise your statements in a minute, please, and next up is Martin Reynolds. No, okay, next up, Joe Sargent, who's definitely here.
Good evening. Um, I'm here to talk about the supported buses and problems with communication between Weta and Bristol City Council. Um, and I, I mean, hopefully, with Weta's statement, I've already been had go up, Dan Morris, who has, um, you know, and, and getting fed up and being popped back and forth between the two local authorities. I think it's really important that we, um, that people are working together and that we're, you know, communicating with each other properly, and not just telling people, oh, it's Weta's problem, please don't do that anymore. I'm recording- Um, I'm also interested in the issue about the, um, car park, the car park charging, particularly for, uh, Hertfordshire. Um, I think if you're considering proposing charges on a car park, um, that's a bad shout, and you want me to go over it in the past, you need to talk to the people that are running the business and the people who are keeping you with that. Those businesses, businesses will not start without a need to have, uh, people coming, really can't get their, uh, big transport, because places like Peel, for example, come to use the butchers on Chilhanty High Street, and those people will decide not to come. That would mean that they will, there will not be adequate footfall in those shops to keep them going. So please, please go and have a look.
Um, I'm very, I'm very willing to do that, Joe, I mean, we can arrange that. Um, next is councillor Morris, will be, um, again, please, can you do it in a minute, summarising councillor, uh, no, sorry, Mr. Coleridge's statement.
Thank you, Chair, for this statement on behalf of Jeff Coleridge, full councillor of, um, Westbury-on-Trim until twenty twenty four. I will summarise it. Um, it's very disappointing to note the first section of the report is headed evidence base, and then receives in the section on district car parks to refer to no evidence whatsoever. Um, he writes specifically regarding the, uh, Westbury Hill Car Park, and he said that the previous administration, the mayor assured that him and local residents and council would consult local community groups before any proposals were pursued. Um, this hasn't happened that he's aware of. Um, local groups have undertaken a round survey of the car park, and, um, basically said that the facts in the report even justify the findings that the local residents have noticed, uh, particularly things like turnover of spaces. Um, I'm almost up a minute, so, um, the proposed charges on Sundays will impact the two churches and the many youth, uh, and community groups in the area. For all these reasons, charges disproportionately affect the young, the old, the ill, the infirm, and those little small businesses.
Uh, well, I'm going, uh, just going to keep you to a minute, but, um, and I was, I did note that one of the statements had actually got some survey results, which I thought were very interesting, very enterprising of the local group to, uh, going out and surveying the, um, car park. Um, I believe we've got one other statement from the British Association of Restaurant Bars and Independents, uh, who, uh, would, uh, like to apologise for the mix-up that your statement is not published, and if you would like, um, to try and summarise it in a minute, and we will make arrangements to make sure it's published, um, uh, really need to be out of this meeting sometime tomorrow.
Uh, Matthew, um, parking, we found out on Monday, uh, at this meeting, um, five hundred and fifty of our venues and twelve and a half thousand members, uh, didn't know anything about it. Uh, we urge you to recommend any increases in, um, parking charges between six p.m. and midnight, um, looking at it, charges from eighty seven and a half percent increases to three hundred and twelve and a half percent increases, um, from the four pound fee, um, are ridiculous, and they're going to massively affect the night time economy. Some smaller venues, the cost of parking will be now more than the cost of getting, uh, into the gig or the venue. There's a huge knock-on for staff as well, um, because the long-term scooters, uh, have now been removed by Weta, so staff now how to either drive or get an Uber or walk unsafely home after midnight. Um, I know that's the other council, um, to look at. We want to object really strongly to any changes until some proper consultation is been done. Um, two major theatres in the centre, all of the major, like, music venues in the centre know nothing about this, haven't been informed. Visit West, who are obviously much bigger than us, they have no idea, I haven't heard, um, about proposed changes. Um, those increases will close venues, they'll stop staff from coming in to the city centre because those know they might transport, okay, and you need to discuss the whole night time, you're running ahead here all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and just to say that I have had communication from Visit List. Um, uh, they missed a deadline, but I did want to make sure that they were heard because they're an important partner for the city council, and they have considerable concerns about the impact of this proposal on the visitor economy in the centre of the city, including visitors, businesses, and their staff, and are asking for more consultation. And as I say, your statement and their statement, all of it, it was late, will be published and pulled on the way. Okay, I just want to make sure there's nobody else here to do this meeting, that they haven't been heard and submitted the statement. Councillor Gooch?
Yes, thanks, um, so I was given a statement, um, by Andrew Redshaw of the Westbury-on-Trim Society.
And Carolyn, we've, I think we've had a lot of statements here, I've run out of time, uh, we have all read, we've read all the statements, but, uh, believe me, I stayed up last night and made sure I went through every one of them. So, uh, those have been noted, and I think you're probably here today, so some of the, um, concerns reflected in the debate were about that. So I, I'm sorry to say that I'm going to try and keep this meeting to time, we've got an awful lot to go through, and one of the things we're going to be doing is, um, moving on now to the thing that's probably created the most statements today, which review parking policies in China is. I'm not going to read all of the preamble, but I am going to say that within the context of Bristol Transport Policy, the council needs to consider a range of initiatives to further improve air quality, make more efficient use of on and off-street public car parking spaces, and thinking about how the management of these spaces can help to deliver better change to more sustainable modes of transport. Um, I'm going to invite, um, Sean Taylor to introduce an headline report. Um, and I'm going to make it closer everyone that, um, there's actually thirteen recommendations, and we're going to be voting on all of them, it's a jilly. So if you wanted to do something high level, then there's going to be a little bit to try and reach the thirteen, I'm afraid to say, John, um, recommendations, uh, some of which I think will take on time and others, so, um, we've spent quite a lot of time with this on the agenda, and, uh, so if you want to keep your preamble relatively short, I'm sure some of the issues you might, uh, want to talk about will come up later as we, uh, go through all the various recommendations.
Hi, yeah, so, I'll be, it's a long report, I apologise for that, but it is trying to cover quite a huge amount of, um, parking. As you know, a lot of it's covered with traffic regulation orders, so there will be statutory consultation post any, um, decisions to date to say, take it forward, you know, we've still got to go through the, at least the processes, most councillors will be aware from their own, um, works. Um, like you say, it's quite, it's trying to cover all, because some of the tariffs don't do inflation rises, so that's trying to be captured into this at the same time, um, because obviously inflation is two, two, two percent, and you've got a pound charge, one pound, two makes it very difficult to manage out on the network, so quite often these come in chunks with inflation, rip over a period of time, to try them forward as well as looking back and bear it, inflation hasn't been included. Um, I'm going to say, I think, I don't want to, I said such a large report, I didn't really want to take the time off, or rather, if there was a discussion, if that's okay, Chair, because I think that you're going to get into the detail anyway, so.
I think that's right, I think we may go through each thing sequentially, so I'm sure you'll be, uh, contributing to, uh, the information as we go through. I mean, I like to say that I was quite shocked at how much we, um, had to tidy up, because this is, uh, appears to have been an area that's been neglected for some time, and when I first saw the, uh, range of charges just to keep up with inflation, I was quite shocked, and I, I've been kind of somewhat worried about, uh, bringing this to committee for some time now, because, uh, there's a lot to get through, and, uh, we really want to crack on and do some of that. So the first, uh, recommendation is to initiate a task and finish group to be chaired by councillor Obraya, to make recommendations to committee for a modern and holistic parking and curb side strategy. Um, I'm, I'm going to note that, uh, one of the reasons I've, uh, made, uh, propose this as a task and finish group of this committee is that there's been no holistic parking, uh, strategy since two, twenty sixteen. In twenty nineteen, the Bristol Transport, uh, Strategy was published, and apparently that was underway, that was five years ago, it hasn't seen the light of day. In twenty twenty-three, January, a review of residents' parking was promised, and that failed to report in January twenty twenty-four, it basically, uh, a couple of recommendations were brought forward by the previous administration with very little evidence or very little review appearing to have taken place. So, um, that's why, uh, and particularly during that period, we've seen Lambeth publish what's basically an excellent curb side strategy, and it's inspired us to think about how we look at this in a holistic way with parking and curb side strategy. So, um, would anyone like to ask any questions about that? Essentially, what will happen is this is no longer a plan for this committee for the next meeting to form, and you constitute that task and finish group. Cat?
Not much of a question, maybe a bit of statement, but, um, yes, we need to revisit parking and curb side strategy, and I think you can all agree that hard pavement parking is a menace, forcing pedestrians, wheelchair users into the road is unacceptable. I think it might be illegal to park on the pavement, not illegal to park on the pavement outside of London and Scotland, so let's hope the new Labour government actually addresses that. And we need to make sure the city is accessible to all, including such things as pavement maintenance and wheelchair access. Um, I think we need to make sure this strategy, uh, links up with public transport strategy as well, and the task and finish group needs to consider the city in its entirety, because a one-size-fits-all, and there's that statement in public forum, won't be the best. So the structure needs to be wide scoping and reflect the wishes of local communities. What we want, don't want to see is what happened in Cleveland when common sense goes out the window, and we have to see that's so stupid that council taxpayers, how money has to be used to remediate them.
Thank you, Cat. Um, anyone else would like to ask questions or, uh, make a statement about this? Um, I've been very impressed with the way Tim, uh, Ripleyton has set about setting up the, uh, bus, bus priorities, task and finish group, and I hope that, uh, Rob, you'll engage with all of the committee to make sure that we are taking on more common sense just cars and getting tons of records and scope that everyone will be happy with. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to say, Rob?
Yeah, I just encourage, I'm encouraged that we're looking at this, uh, and attempting to do it. I think that there are ranges, because Councillor already raised a few of them, and there's going to be a lot of issues, uh, that we need to tackle within this one sort of area. The curb side and parking is good to look at together, because obviously, both the road, the highway side of the curb, over to our mid, and the pavement side of the curb, both issues in Bristol that we know are longstanding issues, particularly pavement parking, but also how we use our street space, how we give people more options to kind of, um, make their streets a bit, a bit, uh, more healthy and more, um, congenial to communities. So that's the kind of approach that I hope we'll be taking and talking about together. Yeah.
So I'm going to move the recommendation, would anyone like to second that? Emma, thank you. Um, I don't think there's any amendments to this, so I'm going to suggest that we move to a vote. Would people like to, uh, vote to, uh, to approve this recommendation? So I'm going to ask for a show of hands. And that's me as well, so, uh, that's carried unanimously, everyone happy with that? Okay, let's move on, we've got a lot to go through. So second is, uh, recommendation two A, approve and implement an increase of fifty-six to a hundred and twenty-four pounds for first vehicle, vehicle permit tariffs. Um, I've asked for this to be based on a full cost recovery model for each of the first permits to cover the full cost of running residence parking services. That seems a very fair way to me, that we equally split the cost of residence parking amongst all the people who have at least one car. That's the basis on which this recommendation is being brought forward. And any questions or, uh, comments that people would like to make, Josh?
Can I just ask a very quick question? So you're saying that the first permit, um, is, that's full cost recovery, so are we saying that subsequent housing, uh, cars within a, a single household, that's going to be money, we're going to be making money out of the scheme?
So so far, uh, as I understand it, the second cars have been helping to cover the, uh, cost of running the scheme. The, uh, what's happened, any excess from residence parking schemes to date, including the panel display parking in the area, has been, uh, ring fenced to reinvest in transport. So that's what we're proposing here, is the second and third car plus any income from panel display then is, uh, helps with transport budget, and is ring fenced for that purpose alone.
Thank you, thanks for clarification.
David?
Uh, no further comments.
Emma?
Thank you. Yeah, I understand the, the point of this, it's, it's, it's bringing it up in my own location, it's closing revenue polls. One thing that this doesn't, this recommendation doesn't cover, because it's, you know, this is purely about the area that's already there, is how we might mitigate those unintended consequences of doing this when the areas outside don't have any RPSs at all. So you're going from a raise for the ones that do and then just outside, none at all. So I have very good concerns that this is going to have knock-on effect to those areas. So I would just like to leave this one to the last, the last point and just say that could you make sure that that is on the agenda for the, for the task and finish group to look at residence parking zones in light of these increases?
I'm asking the class, that the boundaries within, but also any additional boundaries and review of boundaries needs to be looked at in terms of residence parking, in terms of a review of the boundaries of the existing and a review whether or not we need to extend the boundary. Thanks.
Yeah, just wanted to make the point that this is a revisiting of a decision that was made prior to the election. And so there would have been some revenue loss by not having implemented it to date. I just wanted to raise that.
I accept that and I think we need to look at it in the round. David, do you want to respond directly to that point and then come to Cat?
Yes, so the previous administration chose not to implement their own charge. So the delay is purely at the fate of the previous administration, not this administration. I think that also needs to be factored in and we're choosing to actually put a lower peak price for the first car. I think you wanted to do a hundred and seventy-eight pounds as opposed to a hundred and twenty-four. So I think this is more equitable for the whole city and I think it's a positive outcome.
I've got Cat, then Don.
Yes, I just wanted to follow up what was just made. By my reckoning, since May, if the hundred and seventy pounds been implemented, that's about five hundred thousand pounds of potential misbenefit, and the Chair, the job just got an office, it's just gone on a bit, then that would be money that would come into this transport committee. And just for my own benefit, if we, I, I, because I need to understand the constitution, if we don't agree to this, does it default back to the hundred and seventy-eight pounds?
As far as I'm concerned, the hundred and seventy-eight pounds was a policy of the previous administration and not this. And the whole point we're here discussing this today is to test the view of the committee. And that is not something that's currently proposed in the paperwork and it's not an amendment I'm aware of, so I don't see that coming. I'd like to just ask officers actually, in, I know that some budgetary assumptions were made about this increase. I'm assuming it wasn't before year because this would not have been, when, when frankly, and I'm going to be really frank here, when this was moved by, in January, I think the administration of the time knew damn well that there was absolutely no way that this could be put in place with the notice required and implemented before the pre-election period in March. So I do feel that it was a very strange thing to bring forward and maybe Don would like to comment on that, but I'd just like to understand what assumptions were made about the budget to answer your question or your comment.
So this wasn't incorporated or adopted by full council in our last episode's budget paper, so we do not have to revert to the previous one, so we can go ahead with this decision. Where decisions such as district parking, for instance, have been adopted by full council, then we do need to provide an alternative.
So just to reiterate that point, any decisions we make today are re-subject to the fact that we need to make sure that we're covering the budget. And just like if we move budget amendments when we come to the full budget debate, you need to make sure that there's a way of making it cost neutral. We're going to need to, there's so many here, I don't think we're going to do it today here in, here in this meeting. That's why some amendments talk about subject to further examination by finance and legal offices. So we're going to have to look at what we do and don't accept as the current council. And then it's all subject to making sure that we can handle that in more or less a cost neutral budget. Don, you're next, and then Jos.
Thanks, yeah. No, I brought this through cabinet in May, I think, and I had every intention of it being implemented. I still support what I took through cabinet, I've never had a problem. I don't know who has not, has encouraged officers not to take this forward, but I have no reason not. I still think it was a very much the right thing to do.
I was concerned that as previous administration, I needed to test it on this committee and there was no actual evidence brought forward for the reason why it was treble. It just seemed to be less, think of the number of trouble it might have.
The previous administration left in May and it still hasn't been implemented.
That's correct, yes.
Because it doesn't need further political decision made.
This needs to be tested by this committee.
That's your choice.
It's my choice, yes, because I felt it was transparently correct.
So you have made the decision not to implement this.
Well, you made the decision not to implement this by bringing it in January when you knew there was absolutely no hope of it getting done before you left, left administration. Jos.
I'll take the turn down a little bit. This actually highlights a learning point, I think, for all of us, both officers and councillors. When we bring amendments, if it's going to be the case that we are going to have to find the money in the budget, then as councillors, we are on a learning curve here and we know that we have to tweak things as we go. And I know that we are going to be reviewing the committee system and that's coming forward sooner than later, I hope. And I think this is today, this raised a really interesting point. And it's not, when I put my budget in, when I put my amendments in, I wasn't fully aware, I think maybe Tim, I don't know whether you were aware of it, that we actually had to then find money on the other side if we'd made a change. And I think that we need, that the whole council needs to be aware of this and we need to have training. Because putting that onus on us is going to take some time for us to actually find the money. And then when we do budget full council in February, that process starts six weeks beforehand. You know, the fact that we're expected to do this for any amendment that we put in any committee is going to be a phenomenal way to work. I'm just making the point and I'm not having a go at anybody, but I just think this is part of the learning experience that we're all going through here.
And thank you, Jos, and that's really why I made the decision that we're going to go through the amendments and then we're going to have to. I hope the Labour Party aren't going to release a press statement suggesting that we're doing something behind closed doors. But I think as a committee, we did need behind closed doors to try and understand the budget. We didn't make the progress we need to make. So very early, Jos, the task and finish group with parking curb side strategy is going to be able to look at the budget implications. Possibly even because of the fact that the time is ticking before we actually, before we set up that task and finish group. Obviously, that's subject to agreement between the parties. I wasn't aware that the budget neutrality applied until we started looking at the amendments. So that's why it's a learning opportunity and we're going to have to respond quite quickly once we've made our decisions at this committee to see what, what the actual budget implications are. And I hope that will be from the very early meeting of the task and finish group to look this through. I'm going to move, excuse me, I'm going to move that we approve an amendment increase of fifty-six to hundred and twenty-four pounds for first vehicle permit, residence parking permits. We're still going to second that. Thank you, Graham. So if everyone in favour of that amendment, please put up your hand. I see one, two, three, four, five, six hands. And for and against? Abstaining. Three abstentions. Okay, should we move on to residence parking two B? Approve all residence parking permit types going forward are included within council fees and charges of inflation increases made every year around to the nearest total numbers. And I think in the more detailed thing, it's subject to, if inflation is very low, then it may actually cost more than it's worth to do, so we may not do it. So I, I, I'm hoping this is fairly simple and something we can all agree on, so would anyone like to make any comments or questions? Graham.
Absolutely. I think the reason why residents could have been impacted were they, a very large increase on their first car is because we haven't taken inflation into account on an annual basis. So I think it's good practice to build in inflationary increases annually to try to minimise the impact on residents getting shocks.
Thank you. I'm going to assume that that's enough said and that we moved this agenda, will someone second it, this recommendation two B? Will someone second that? Thank you, David. Can I have a show of hands in favour of this recommendation? That's unanimous. Shall we move on to C? Approve and implement price alignment for all Easton E S R P S permits with prevailing rates for other R P Ss as soon as possible to remove the pricing anomaly. Does anyone want to make any comments on this? David.
Chair, I would like to propose an amendment to this text, please.
So I think technically, if I understand, I have to move it seconded and then you can propose an amendment. So you might like to explain why you're moving an amendment.
Yes, we would prefer to make it more equitable for the, the people of the Easton R P S area so that the price is actually staged over two years. Easton is one of the most deprived areas of the city and we want to minimise the impact on that area. So the amendment reads, you can get rid of the office lobby. It did read, approve and implement a price alignment for all Easton R P S permits with prevailing rates for other R P Ss as soon as possible to remove the pricing anomaly, to change it to read to approve and implement price alignment for all Easton R P S permits with prevailing rates for other R P Ss over a two-year period to remove the pricing anomaly, noting the budget implications for this increase on net notable.
So as things stand, we are able to take, I did ask people to submit amendments by noon yesterday, so we can do this in a normal way. This was submitted in writing before this meeting and constitutionally, of course, to accept it, particularly given that the, in our finance papers, it shows that this is a negligible impact on the overall budget. So by definition, by doing it over two years, it's also negligible over the overall budget. That's why I've allowed this at short notice. It's something I know that the review of the constitution will be looking at as to whether or not this is something that we continue to allow. So I'm going to move the actual recommendation, which is basically a lot, price alignment with prevailing rates for Easton as soon as possible to remove the pricing anomaly. Do I have a second? Emma, thank you. So David, you're now going to, I don't think you need to read it out again, but.
I've moved my amendment.
Yeah, would someone like to second that? Okay, Rob. Does anyone want to make any comments, Tim?
Yeah, just to say, it is a bit disappointing that this amendment's come so late, especially as it's moved by the parties. They're also chairing the committee, we haven't had a chance to, to discuss it, so we're going to vote openly on this one. But yeah, if we could, we did, us to go up to get our amendment on time, so.
Look, as I made very clear in the email, asking people to do it by noon, it was a request, but there's nothing to stop the constitution doing this. I'd like to make it very, very clear, I've played an incredibly straight bat. Nobody from the Green Party saw the draft report until other parties have seen it for our general conference. And that's really why we're in the position we're in today. And there's been a choice to do that later in the day. So let's not talk about the procedure for now, I'm going to try and stop that happening again. But for the time being, we are faced with this amendment and I think Emma's about to put her hand up, I want to speak.
Thank you, yeah, I just wanted to speak a little bit more on the amendment and yes, it is, it is late. It's, you know, with, with all of these parking changes comes a lot of challenges, don't they? And I think looking at the equalities report, which I think we really went through with the Fine Tooth Code today, backed up with some of the councillor's statements, there is, there is discrepancies in that equality to report, this is going to affect people for the lower socio-economic background, people of different cultures, women. This gives them a little bit more time to make that adjustment, to make the changes they need for those modal shares to, to, to let them settle in. It's, it's a courtesy, it has no, they're eligible, I can't say that word, to, of impact on the budget. So if we can do this as a courtesy to that area, which has had a lot of challenges in the last two years, if we can, I think it would be very grateful on behalf of those residents. So apologies, but this is why we're doing it.
And I do note that this is not only one of the most deprived wards in Bristol, it's one of the most deprived wards in the country. Cat.
Yes, I just want to echo what Tim said about the lateness of this amendment. I'm a bit confused, if I'm honest, about this now. I did read the statements, like yourself, Ed, last night, and as the Green councillor, as in Mohammed, said, it's time for councillors to stop making dispositions for potential residents who own cars and treat them like an easy small sector income. The residents of Longchamp, like many others, have already been hit hard by economic impacts. So I just wondered if the Greens actually talked about one another.
As I say, I, I don't think this is, I feel that bringing this later in the day, but as I'd also like to very strongly emphasize, I played a completely straight bat and all parties saw this at the same time.
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood, how does it not impact on the budget if it's two years rather than one? Because in one year you have the full amount in and over two years you get half the amount and then the full amount. So cumulatively, that surely means that you would get more money if you brought it straight away.
I based the decision to allow this on the Finance Business Partner Report, which said that the impact of making this change was negligible.
Negligible, okay.
It actually said that in the paperwork, that was the person I checked.
I misunderstood, I thought it was here, negligible.
So shall we vote on the amendment, which is to phase the increase in Easton to align it with the rest of the prices over two years? That's five, including Jos, thank you. And anyone against? One and abstaining, three. Yeah, so that's passed. Should we move on to? Oh yes, so that is now the revised, we've accepted the amendment and now we're voting on the two C as amended. So who now votes for phasing this in over two years? So this is basically a formality because we're now voting on the substantive increase to align it for over two years. So that's unanimous, thank you. Let's move on to three A. This approves a rounded twenty-two percent inflation increase to medical, trade and business and customer permits in the R P S areas. Would anyone like to speak to this? Shall I move it as a, move this recommendation? Would anyone like to second that, please? Rob, thank you. Shall we move straight to a vote? Okay, so who would like, can you show that you're in favour of twenty, rounded twenty-two percent inflation increase to all these particular permits? Unanimous. Three B. Introducing a charge for all visitor permits excluding essential visitor permits for care needs. This, that charge needs to be aligned with the prevailing hourly pay and display rate and remove the additional allowance per household. Does anyone want to ask any questions or make any comments about this? Should I move this three B to approve, I've just said it, I'm not going to say it again because I think we can, but I think it's also, it may not be the most legible thing to read, but. So I move it, will someone second that, please? Rob. And if you're in favour of recommendation three B, please raise your hand now. Carried unanimously. Four A. And let me just, so that improves a rounded twenty-two percent inflationary increase to R P S pay and display rate to two pounds per hour. Would anyone like to make any comments or ask any questions about this? Emma.
Thank you, I just thought I would say that I struggled with this one a little bit. So there was another option considered, which you can see in the papers, which would be to offer a reduced charge, which would then close that loophole. It would still, you know, having something really, really It would still, you know, having something really, really small like fifty p or something, just that A, we could stop people abusing the system, but we'd still have that high turnover. But I see that that has not stuck, that hasn't, that's been rejected. So I am going to reluctantly vote scrap thirty-minute charging, but I would have liked to see that.
Is that 4C?
Am I the wrong one?
I think that's 4C, yeah, so we're on 4A. At the moment, unless I'm mistaken, we're on 4A, which is just a straight inflationary increase to RPS paying display to two pounds an hour, I think it's one fifty at the moment. So twenty-two percent plus rounding it up to a sensible round number is what we're being asked to approve. That's not a hand up. So I'm going to move this, would anyone like to second it? Graham, thank you. So if you're in favour of paying display, you're going to have a twenty-two percent rounded up and so I'll put my hand there. Carried unanimously. 4B. Approves the principle of an additional uplift of pay and display rates in specified RPS areas to reflect higher level of demand and encourage turnover spaces and its application specifically in Cliftonville RPS, Kingston RPS and Clifton East RPS. Would anyone like to talk about maybe the principle of differential pricing? Rob?
Yeah, I think it's important to monitor where we've got these discrepancies between different areas for this kind of thing. You know, demand production is a pretty key principle of effective transport planning. You have to know what the turnover is and how that's all going. So I think this is justified. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think the discrepancy between the amount is a huge amount and I think that's, that's okay. So yeah, I think it's a good thing to go with this.
So I'm going to move it, I think, Rob, I think you've effectively seconded it, thank you. So can we have a show of hands in favour of 4B, the basic differential pricing in three, is it three areas? Three RPS areas, that's carried unanimously. The, you're, so that's eight in favour and one abstention, is that correct? Yes, okay. Now, 4C approves the removal of the thirty-minute free parking tariff in RPS areas. Emma, do you just want to reiterate what you were saying there, very quickly?
Thank you, yes, so I was just saying, what I think would be an ideal scenario would be to have the very, very, very cheap first thirty minutes, just so that we can close that loophole, but we can still keep that, that sort of turnover and people can still walk into the shop. But that would be not possible, so I had to weigh it up, but I'm going to vote in favour of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or thoughts, yes, Tim?
Um yeah, this was, thirty minutes free was a latent policy, which, you know, councillor Mark Bradshaw fought quite hard to bring in. We do know the anecdotal evidence about abuse of this, but we do think it's something we want to retain because of the help that it gives to small businesses. And so we'll be voting against this particular item, I believe.
Okay, shall we, do we, any more comments or questions about this? And then should we move straight to a vote then? So I'm going to move to C, remove of the thirty-minute free parking tariff in all RPS areas. So look in favour? That's four, against? That's five, this is not carried. Okay. What we have now, five. Approves the implementation of charging at the district car parks as soon as possible. Any comments or questions? Tim?
Yeah, just one thing, we've, we've already talked about the financial implications of this, but we are worried about the robustness of the estimates for income from these car parks. We think it's unlikely they would raise the amount stated in this report. In many instances, we think people would simply choose to park in the surrounding streets, places like Brisbaneton, for instance, that's almost certain to happen and that would cause its own issues, talked about payment parking just now. More people parking in the streets and not parking in designated car parks, we don't think it's a good idea and we're not in favour of this.
Rob?
Yeah, I do want to acknowledge that a couple of these car parks, so actually I'm a ward, but I do support charging people to park. Obviously, we want people to visit parks, but there are many ways to get to parks that don't require a car. Admittedly, yeah, there are some people who need to drive. I do think that this does have implications, but I think that the key thing to remember is we, we know we have to shift people out of their cars. It's a key policy of the council to try and shift people out of their cars. We don't vote for measures like this, we're unlikely to be able to do that in the long term. And this is part of the bigger picture, it's just one part of it, but I think it's important. You know, I visit parks regularly with my children without using a car. For instance, I go to Old Beccaw by bike along Rowes Bath or by bus along the St James' and Fishpond Road. These are important aspects of these conversations, that there are other ways to get to parks that don't require, you know, that don't require you to use a car. For some people, that would be necessary, I'd say. See, you're welcome.
Thanks, Rob, great, and then Jos?
Thank you, so, you know, it's been our party life a long time and we cannot support the implementation of these district, of the charges into the district car parks and that doesn't change. I'm in a ward which has the second highest proportion of elderly people in the city. I believe Westfield and Trim has the highest proportion and, you know, they don't want to go to parks with their kids, what they want to do is go and visit the doctor or go and then back to the shops. So as a result, I won't be supporting this, but I do think there is a cheat from the Labour Party who implemented a policy of setting off some of the car parks, including the one in Stockwood, which would have a big impact on our, on our shops. And then sitting here now opposing a policy that they implemented themselves eighteen months ago.
I would just like to also state that I'm slightly confused by the Labour Party because three weeks ago they issued a statement saying that I should have pushed this through under delegated authority that was accorded to me. So I'm very, very confused as to how three weeks ago you were saying this needed to be done and I should have done it under delegated authority, now you're opposing it then. Catherine?
I'm sorry, Jos?
Jos then, Catherine.
Thank you very much, I've been waiting here patiently.
Yes.
Unusual for me, I know.
Jos, I'm sorry.
First of all, the paperwork's incorrect, Callington Road does not have a car park, it's West Ham Lane. And that's why in my amendment I put Callington Road, West Ham Lane, just, just for any confusion there. I'd like to speak about the two car parks in my ward in Brisbaneton West. The Callington Road, West Ham Lane, car park, there is, I understand that we want to stop commuter park, commuter park, a bit of people parking at eight o'clock in the morning and then picking their car up, getting on a bus and picking their car up in the evening. I understand that and I'm sure that's the same with a lot of these car parks. We want to discourage people using them for commuting into the city and I've got no problem with that. So having a time restriction on those car parks, and I believe the West Ham Lane one, the other ones I know of, have a restriction already and that's fine. What I'm really, really concerned about is the issues of local shops and the local amenity. And the one in West Ham Lane, there are a number of, there's a couple of takeaways there. You're not going to pay a pound to go and buy a bag of chips. You're not going to pay a pound to park your car and then pop in and buy a bag of chips. You're going to go to a park outside a chip shop where you don't have to pay. So that's all, those, those businesses will suffer. We've got Domino's pizzas, exactly the same thing, those Domino's guys are not going to be parked, pay to park their vehicle, to pop in, to pick up a pizza, to take, to deliver it. So those, it's really going to put pressure on some quite vulnerable amenities and we don't want to lose those shops and those amenities in our communities. And they don't have enough sustainable population around them where people can actually walk to or, because the majority, I would suggest, of those, those types of shops, same with the newsagents, is going to be passing trade and they're not, they're simply just not going to stop them and pay a parking fee to use that shop, they're going to literally go elsewhere. And I know in Westbury Village, it's going to be a dispersal, a situation of dispersal. So people won't use the car park, they will just park in local roads. And I know that we have car parks in situations where people will just naturally park on the road because that's the obvious thing to do. But in situations like the West Ham Lane one, they're in very, very many places close to park, apart from Lidl's across the road, and people will just go into Lidl's, they won't bother to go across the road and use their phones. And I just have real concerns about the knock-on effect and the, potentially the unintended consequence, where we're actually going to lose amenities by charging a relatively small amount of money. But as I said, if you're making a cost benefit analysis as a customer, do I pay a pound to park my car to go and buy a bag of chip? Or do I go to a different chip shop, drive to a different chip shop and I don't have to pay? I know what I'm going to do and that's, that's human nature, that's absolutely obvious. And I think that... I think that actually we need, as a, as a community in Bristol, we need to be aware and we need to take, pay heed to these very, very local shops, or else we are going to lose them and they will be gone forever. Thank you.
Thanks, Jos, I've got Catherine and then I've got Patsy, one of the directors here, also wanting to come in.
So obviously, I'm a new councillor and I'm aware that early in the year, a budget was agreed to defer car parking for a year, so I was kind of a bit surprised to see this come back onto the agenda. I do know it was the Tory party who engaged in the budget setting process and it was due to their willingness to cooperate and negotiate that a budget was finally passed. I noticed the public forum statements from Tory councillors at past and present, and I can't even brag to say this, but a particular highlight for me last night was reading the statement from consistently the councillor Weston and actually agreeing with some of his points, like many residents already face financial pressures. But indeed, because of course we've had fourteen years of the Tory government, including this trust's disastrous mini-budgets, there's lots to do to rebuild the economy. But on the more general point, there's about the equalities impact assessment, disproportionate impact on low-income households, I do agree, lots of points are made in public forum. And I think, you know, when it comes to things like Westbury Hill, which I'm actually quite local to, I can recognize things that are said in public forum about the pharmacy and the GP on the science in the village, which I know quite well, has deteriorated over many years. Lots of charity shops are opening, banks are closing. And I do think we need to support our suburban high streets, give them all the support they need.
And because I think just, it's my understanding that this budget was debated and agreed with the Tory party in 2023. So it was the budget, the last year's budget rather than this year, so it's just a point of clarification. And I think that the, accepting that this needed to go through all the statutory consultation and everything, it's only a causer of the projected income of this has been put into the kind of budget. But Patsy, would you like to just make your comment?
Yeah, so the, it was approved by Cabinet, but there was a subsequent budget amendment to delay the implementation. And what's important to notice, that budget, the two hundred and seventy-six thousand, because it was approved, it has been taken from highways budget, so if this is one of those that was approved in the budget papers in February, so because this is part of the budget build and it has been taken, we would need an alternative proposal to, to fill the gap that this will leave because the budget has gone. I will just add that for equity reasons, this is not about any kind of profit making or anything, it's about covering costs of maintenance for district car parks. And we do charge across the city, you know, so it's equitable that those areas pay in line with all of the other public areas across the city.
And I was pleased that, as I mentioned, councillor Weston's statement, because I was very pleased also to see that he stated the idea of promoting alternative transport options and then encouraging shifting travel choices is understandable. And I'd really like to see positive proposals from all the parties to try, help us try and achieve what we know is an essential thing, because I don't think, do nothing is an option when it comes to transport. Jos?
I mean, it's really, really quick.
Yes.
I think you've just been talking about budget implications and we need, if we make an amendment, and this is precisely what I was saying a few minutes ago, we have not been told that this is like budget setting, you know, in February. And as I think it's really unfair for it to be swung at us today, that actually if we put an amendment, we have to have a, we have to have the cost savings on the other side. And I don't think we, I just really don't think that's fair. If this is part of the process moving forward, fine, but we have to know and we have to have time to actually work this into all of our processes. So to say to us today, actually, you can't put this amendment in because there's a budget implication and you're going to have to find it, I don't think we can do that, I just don't think that's right.
I'd just like to make it clear that I was advised by the legal team just this morning that any of these amendments will be subject to ratification by legal and financial officers. So, but given that there's a lot to get through, I made the decision that we'll get through it all and then look at the implications, but they're all subject to this because they're, and where it's clearly in the budget and clearly identified that that budget needs to be looked at, we cannot guarantee that any of these are going to happen. Equally, we can't guarantee that they're necessarily going to happen because some of them will be subject to statutory consultation. Tim, I'm going to take, hopefully this is the last comment on this and then I think Jos, you've got an amendment to propose.
Yeah, just coming back to the financial implications. When we had our agenda setting meeting, I did request that the overall package be priced up in the paper so that we could see how much income these proposals would be generating because you may lose a bit from not having one, but you may be gaining far more from others. So, but I did, that hasn't gone into the papers, so.
I think each paper, each proposal has some cost implications in it and I think that's buried within the detail of the report and also the Finance Business Partner has made sure that those are captured and itemized, but Patsy?
It does say in the financial commentary, I don't want to force you to word for word then, that even if all of this was approved, asked for that, it wouldn't balance the budget. So there is no surplus, even if one hundred percent of this goes through now, there is still work for us on the committee to do to get to a balanced budget.
There's a difference between balancing the budget and the overall package we're agreeing today, increasing the amount of money that's going into the budget?
It doesn't create any surplus, even if all of this goes through today, it says in the commentary in the finance section that it will not balance the budget, so we will have a short run of the budget. Budget's still a fact, we will come and work with the committee on how we get there, but this will not create anything, and that is a surplus to cover anything else.
So just to remind us all, that we're all collectively responsible for the budget of this committee. Everyone, what we've heard today is quite alarming and it's a number of factors that, for example, impacting inflation on, just standing still on things like local internet. Jos, would you like to, I'm going to move, right, let's get the procedure right. I'm going to move this and then you'll have it seconded and then Jos, you approve that amendment. So are we, so this recommendation approves the implementation of charging at the district car parks as soon as possible. Now, I made it, but someone else seconded it, Rob, thank you. Jos, I believe you have an amendment.
I do, is it up on the, can we put it back up on the board? Recommendation five, improve, approves the implementation of charging district, district car parks. And my amendment is specifically about the Westbury Hill, Repton Road and Callington Road stroke West Ham Lane. I propose that we have a time, a period of ninety minutes for Westbury Hill free parking. And that takes into consideration people going to GPs, things like that. Our Repton Road is sixty minutes and Callington stroke West Ham Lane, sixty minutes free parking. Now, the reason I've moved on just those three car parks is because I, I, I thought that Stockwood still was in the mix. I spoke to Graham, but I wasn't aware of what the situations were within the other car parks and what they would approve. As I've stated previously, the West Ham Lane, it would be, it would mean that those businesses would... would fail to thrive, and I put that in the platters way possible. In Repton Road and Westbury Hill car parks, the, all it would do is just disperse the cars onto the neighbouring roads and streets. So I think it would, it would be detrimental in terms of local parking in that area. And I'm just wondering how much revenue all of these schemes are going to bring in with that bearing that in mind. I know that there's going to be a cost of implementing these schemes and I just wonder whether the, they're going to even make their money back after implementing these schemes. So my amendment is specifically around Westbury Hill, Repton Road, Carrington stroke West Ham Lane.
And subject to legal and financial officers.
Of course, naturally, naturally, yes.
Feedback and endorsement. Would anyone like to second that amendment? I'm sorry, Jos, I'm going to second it.
I've been thinking about. No, I've been thinking about this and I've said to more and more person whether I would or wouldn't, I would second it. And I'm absolutely torn on this particular point. It's what I hate about the party politics that we have that's ruining this city. No, absolutely. And I've been living in Bristol 51 years and party politics haven't taken us any further forward. So I think I will second it, which because the residents of certain areas have the right. But I do think that we need to look at all of these car parks, district car parks, on an individual basis rather than because one size doesn't fit all for all of them. Okay, should we move? Does anyone want to say anything else? I assume we're strict about it. So, Rob.
Yeah, I, I do want to say something. I do think there's a, a potential risk here if we are taking specific car parks out of a set of larger, you know, larger set of car parks and saying these are going to have this setup and those are going to have another setup. I take on board the point about, you know, case by case, you know, you can't have one size fits all approach. But at the same time, it does create implicit unfairness if we do this in one area and not another. I think that's problematic. I think we need to have that as a view and not just frankly, look at the ones that are in our area. As I've said already in this debate, the two of these car parks are in my ward and I'm willing to put my hand on the power button and say they need to charge for people to come to them. And now I admit, okay, this, this amendment is only talking about free parking, but of course that just disincentivizes the entire point of charging for car parks, which is to discourage people from using cars to travel around the city. So we have to have that joint approach, look at the entire issue, not just this sort of frankly, parochial mindset we have towards some of these things sometimes. And so I would be strongly against this amendment because I think we need to take them all or not take them.
Can I just comment on this? Not unsurprising. We've just had an amendment from Emma about the eastern parking situation, which is obviously very different and it's, we're not taking a parochial approach obviously to the eastern situation, but yet it's okay to take this approach to these ones that I've amended, that I've brought the amendment about. So I do think it's, and I'm, I'm not into getting into party politics, but I mean, we have been sitting in this meeting and we've heard special exception for very particular reasons. I've got no problem with that at all, but I've just explained to the committee, I've just explained to the committee here why we have specific situation here and I just think that that's a bit, yeah.
I'm going to move us on to a vote on this. So in favour of the amendment to specifically 60 minutes for Repton and West Ham Lane and 90 minutes exception for Westbury on Trim Park. Yeah, sorry.
So I just, just wanted to make the point that logistically trying to enforce that amendment would be almost impossible because officers, obviously, we don't have officers all the way around, roaches around. So trying to actually go somewhere and 90 minutes later return, we would not have the resources to deliver that. Just thought that was important to understand, that the actual enforcement to try and deliver that amendment would be.
Okay, can I just, through the chair, can I just point out to you, you do have parking restrictions in these car parks already, which obviously you do feel are enforceable. So why is this not enforceable?
Well, so the restrictions there, as I've said before, they're very difficult, logistically very difficult to enforce. So whilst the restrictions are there to prevent, trying to encourage, logistically because of resources and, you know, having to return, takes officers the driving time to go to those more district car parks to try and then enforce, makes it extremely difficult to enforce that. I'm not saying we don't do it, I'm just saying it makes it very difficult to do.
I, I think we're just going to move to a vote now because I don't think, I understand that that's something that, I understand, I think you've said already what the main point about that in both directions. So I don't, I don't think we're going to add much more to the debate. So in favour of three car parks having 60 or 90 minute exemptions, which is the amendment for us, put your hand up if you're in favour of this amendment. That's two. Against? Seven. So now we're moving to the, so that falls and we go back to the original, which is approves implementation of charging of the district car parks as soon as possible. So all those in favour of this? Four. All those against? Five. So that fails. Again, all of this is subject to feedback and from financial and legal officers. Right.
Can I just clarify then?
Yes.
So obviously you've just said to us now it's going to have to go through legal and financial scrutiny. And at that point, can it now be, can it be turned over at that point? Is that what you're saying?
It can be, yes.
And will it come back here before that?
I think, I think we're going to need to take a bit of a breath and meet again. I hope the Labour Party are not going to try and spin that as doing things behind closed doors, but I think we need to all understand new information that's been presented to us today and the impact of each of the decisions we've made sequentially on the overall budget so that we can, now obviously we may not need to do that in terms of information gathering and we may have to come back to this.
It's, our decision cannot be followed through. How about we go back to the initial decision regarding our feedbacks that I may have made? Because then that would cut the volume, wouldn't it? And I think away because I wanted to be responsible at the time, not to get in this mess.
I think, I think that's, I think we need to have an understanding. This is what I was trying to do and I'm afraid that Labour Party has spun it, we're trying to make decisions behind closed doors, but no, we're trying to understand the budget implications of what we're doing. We've all received information just today that all of this is subject to budget finance and legal approval because it's effectively amending the budget and it has to be neutral. So I think we all will need a little bit of time to decompress and understand the impact of the decisions we've made and receive feedback from the finance and legal stuff. But I think, I know the procedure in this has not been perfect, but we definitely do need to, to, I think we need to get the facts in black and white on paper before we make any decisions. And Don, there's absolutely no reason if we are bringing a formal proposal through, we voted through for a committee that they can't be amended.
Sorry, Chair. I mean, what it feels to me, we, we voted for a change of system, so we've moved to a committee system, which we've all signed up, we've signed up to, yeah. Well, yeah, we, there's a.
The city's voted.
The city's signed up to that process. And so now what we're saying in effect is we are a committee that we can make decisions, but actually we maybe we can't.
What we're saying is that we, each committee is responsible for a budget set by the full council. In the full council budget setting process, any budget amendments have to be cost neutral. We've all signed up to that and we've all agreed it. And we are now actually amending the budget and that needs to be done in the cost neutral way wherever possible, which I'm sure my legal staff is the correct and proper way of all, you know, there's anything anybody's rights about doing.
No, I think that must be right. I think that's the difference of this one is it was previously approved and was taken account in the budget, albeit deferred to a half a year. But it has been, decisions have been taken in this committee, not to implement it. So I think we'll have to come back with recommendations about how we can make up that budget proposal. So I think that's what the process is. I don't think you can just completely override the decision you've just taken, but we'll have to come back with proposals to have the budget can be balanced in other ways. And we can obviously have discussions before the next committee, but that's all right with us.
We're very over time, but Tim, Kaz, if you could speak as briefly as possible in that order.
Well, I was just going to say, thank you, John. That sounds like a breath of fresh air because it, it is not for us at this point to, to do that. It's the officers to go away and come back with new proposals, which we can then vote on in public.
Okay, let's do it like that, Kaz.
Mine's only a very quick comment in response to Jos and I just remember the camels that were going about during the mayor against committee system debate and it seemed like the, the camel to give a hand to him.
Yeah, just to say, I think the reason why we're struggling on this particular point is that because of the Labour Party, this is in the budget. And because it's in the budget, we have to find a way of trying to unpick it. It's not like some of the other proposals where it's not actually in a budget, so we have more flexibility perhaps, but because it's there and obviously we've all got responsibility to help set a balanced budget for the city. So that's really the, the bottom line, isn't it?
So I'm going to minute now that all of these proposals will be digested by officers. We're going to have to bring this back to a future meeting of this committee. Any, any proposals that officers are going to bring? I think that's what we're going to do now.
Yeah, I think that's right. I mean, we, we, as you said, Chair, I don't want to take stock at the end of where we look to. It's particularly, as councillor Morris said, things that are already in the budget have come out and therefore have a direct budget implication and we'll, we'll have a discussion with you and through normal processes. But that would be my proposal, that we can forward good proposals which would make up any budget deficits and then you prefer.
And I think we're going to have to be very, very clear about the terms of engagement when we do that, because we can't keep reversing this and being a sort of vortex of continually not making decision and not adhering to the budget and we as a full council. So I'm going to move us on if that's all right. And I'm very happy to take a conversation with the party group leaders, the party leaders, the party representatives. Shall we? We've got another one here, which is approved, where are we? Early six, yeah. Approves the implementation of competitive early bird charging at Temple Gate and West End M S C P's, not history car parks and monitoring the impacts. So we've had a situation where effectively our revenue has gone down despite putting the prices up because of the competitive market. Councillor.
Yes, on this one, I just want to say, well done to the officers and maybe the Chair for bringing this forward. You know, I'm looking to go to Temple Mead, for example, we need to get a train to, I looked at the options and if you make a journey in the morning, transport may be an issue. I thought it was all possible because if you're going to Garden Haskins, you might have to walk from there to Temple Mead, maybe it's 6 o'clock in the morning and that isn't a very ideal situation. So I actually think it's a really good proposal and I'm certainly for it.
I'm going to move it, but does someone want to second it? Graham. Shall we, no amendments, right. Would everyone like, who is in favour of this, like to raise their hand, please? That's unanimous. Right, we've got another one. Recommendation seven, approves inflationary increase to on and off street parking charges and move to linear charging for a two-place project. Would anyone like to say anything about this? Emma.
Thank you, Chair. This is one I've got concerns about just because, again, looking at the E Q I report, I think there is more work to be done regarding the night time economy. You know, as we keep talking about modal shift, modal shift, modal shift, which is getting people onto public transport, which is getting people cycling, that isn't always an option in the night time economy. What I would really like us to do is maybe this is something to park, that's sorry, actually, because of bus, it could be to the bus line, we don't have to need to look at night buses, but to do a bit more work around night buses, work with the, with the night time economy, work with businesses, see what they have to, to, to suggest around how to get their employees home safely in the middle of the night. I worry that this is disproportionately going to affect women in the night time economy as well. So for that reason, I'm, I'm pretty abstain on this.
Councillor.
Yes, I agree with what Emma said there and I was really grateful that the person from Barbie turned up to talk about this as an issue. And also councillor, Staff Townsend, to really think about the impact of the night time economy, women's safety, and they shut off time for parking rides and issues. So I think there's some good issues being brought up here that need to be considered.
Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, just wanted to say, reiterating about ride buses that end at nine o'clock at night, so certainly this, this, we think this has some severe implications for the night time economy and we, we're not happy to proceed with bringing linear pricing in without having more of a look at it, which is why we've brought up an amendment forward. Just want to mention something. I did notice in councillor's, Staff Townsend's statement earlier, she said this was a Labour proposal, but actually this is a new proposal. So this hasn't been brought forward by the Labour Party. This has been brought forward by this committee.
So I'm going to move this unless anyone wants to say anything else. I think we've probably covered the main points and we made reference to the statement by Barbie. So I'm going to move this and then I think, sorry. Well, I move it, it gets seconded then as an amendment. So I'm going to move the, approved inflationary increases to on and off street parking charges and move to linear charging through a two-place project. Would anyone like to second that? Rob, thank you. So I believe there's an amendment, so is that from Tim?
That's correct. As I say, we are happy with the inflationary increase, but we're not happy to go ahead with the linear pricing at this time. We suggested that this is something that could come to the, the parking task and finish group, but our amendment suggests just amending the inflationary increase at this time.
So the amendment is to approve the inflationary increase but not move to linear parking. I would like to refer this to both the task and finish group, the copseide and parking, but also to the buses because we need to consider the impact of night buses and parking riders, you rightly said, didn't you?
Yeah, we certainly recognise that the money in that pot is limited, but this is definitely something we have to look at.
Okay, so would anyone like to second that amendment? Don. So shall we vote in favour of the amendment? One, two, three, six, seven. Against amendment and abstentions. Two. So we move now to basically say that the recommendation is now approved inflationary increase to on and off street parking charges. So four. Carry on. And then I don't think, I think we've made this point enough already, haven't we, that delegating the authority to executive director, girlfriend and generation to implement the approved proposals? I think it's just under any horn of votes above and I'm not going to take a vote on that. Okay. Well, as far as I'm concerned, that applies to every single one of the recommendations we've taken to study, or do we need? Okay, should, I'm going to move it, someone wants to second it? Can we vote that that is delegate authority to implement the approved proposals and I guess to bring back mental proposals?
Yes. Chair, so I think the, we will bring back some mental proposals through the normal process. I think the issue is, is that one as councillor Morris said, one will weigh in on the budget. So I think I'm going to have to get some more advice on that, but I'll come back.
I think at least two is in the budget, actually. The travelling residents parking and the, I think it's number five, the district car parks. The travelling residents parking and the, I think it's number five, the district car parks. Oh, is it? Oh, okay. So is there any one on the budget? All right. Sorry? Um, okay, well, that's something that's up to debate. And I guess in terms of procedure, do we need to put this on the forward plan? Or do we just take it as matters arising and do it that way?
I would say if it amounts to making decisions specifically, it's not the full plan, it's not the full plan, sorry. It depends how the full plan is turned, so we'd have to look at that as to whether it's already covered with information or whatever there.
So we'll do the necessary to get this back in front of the committee again as soon as we possibly can. And so if we take the vote on, um, that we are delegating authority to the executive director to grow from the generation to approve, implement the approved proposals and bring back recommendations for a balanced budget. Agreed? Uh, sorry, seconded? Thank you, Rob. Agreed? I don't think that's, no, that's eight hands. And is that your hand up, Joss? I can't see. Oh, sorry, I couldn't see it because it's a nine, carry on, obviously. Thank you. I'm going to propose a five-minute break adjournment, just literally because I think we need a bit of comfort. And then we're, it also gives me a chance to re-collaborate all the decisions we've got to make into the next hour and five minutes. Thank you. Not to make the media be supported, Bus Services Task and Finish Group. This, uh, under the new constitution, each committee gets two task and finish groups. Um, we've informally all discussed the idea of making sure that we can get some principles by which this committee works in order to apply a budget that comes from the Clean Air Zone in support of bus services. I'm very grateful to Tim Ripington agreeing to take on this task, which is, um, and we've informally agreed, and this is just to formalise it, get it going, and accept the terms of reference. I don't know if there's anything you would like to say, Tim, as the proposed Chair of this group?
Um, just to say that I see this as really important for the city. You know, we talk a lot about things we're doing to try and get people to use their cars less, but it's really important that we start to improve the alternative public transport, um, solutions in the city. And I appreciate that we don't have a lot of power because a lot of these things are devolved to WACCA. But in this instance, we have money in the budget that we've specifically set aside for doing this. Um, and it should be for us to decide where we want to spend that money. Um, I know that lots and lots of people are going to have an interest in this, so we'll do our best to take into account as many voices as we can, but the money won't go that far. I know that in terms of, um, you know, the cost of running bus services at the moment, so we'll see. Okay, but I think the one thing I'd say about this is in terms of task and finish groups, that a lot of committees springing up left, right and centre at the moment. And a lot of councillors are being, having to be involved in a lot of things. I think we've got two more coming in, Strategy and Resources on Monday. But this is a true task and finish group. It has a task to do, complete in a certain timescale and then finish.
Uh, thanks, Tim, and I think you're absolutely right that our transport policy has got to be based on carrots and sticks, if you like, demand management, and increase supply for extra bus services. And there's a huge amount of demand out there. We've lost a lot of bus services and this really is just a very small amount. So we're going to have to be very, very clear about the way we prioritise, how we invest, what little money we have, having a huge demand. Rob?
Thanks, Chair. Um, yeah, I'm pleased. This is quite a quick turnaround for this task and finish group. I think it's good in this instance because, yeah, it's obviously time sensitive in terms of when the changes can be implemented, you know, in only those two windows. Um, it does require, I think, effective and timely input from the local councillors across the city who are closest to where the lack of service is. Um, and hopefully that will be part of the remit of the committee to take those comments on board. And from my personal perspective, with these resources and paper coming in, in part of the award, um, it is imperative that the bus services that are perhaps in unorthodox patterns, so thinking of Service Five and I am more, uh, do have support because they are very, very important to the strategic network and the links that we have. And expanding services, not just resting on a lot of the sort of so-called show-based bus routes, but we have to look beyond that with this, hopefully, and then find as many as we can to get onto the books and support them. Yeah, so I'm very encouraged this is going forward and wish, Councilor, you too, good luck.
I think you may need it. I think we may want to hear from local councillors, but the whole point of this is to make sure that we've got some agreed principles by which we prioritise so we don't end up playing kind of bus bingo and shouting out numbers of bus routes that we'd like to see more of or be greeted or whatever. Um, and we've already added just today, sorry, Tim, the idea of night buses because of the nighttime economy, parking charges, the linear parking charges, and Rob has now layered on, and quite rightly so, I think, the role of whether or not we want to boost buses as labourers come online. So no pressure. Um, I'm going to, and I'd particularly like to thank officers in the way they put this together because we've got a very small window. We've got to get those buses registered by sometime in January. So there's a really clever sequence of events by which we identify some priorities, put out things to tender and then bring those two things together in order to decide how best to invest the money we've got. I don't know if there's anything you want to say, Adam?
Yeah, just to, so we will bring a paper back in December to seek the formal committee approval for spending the money. Prior to that, the task and finish group will need to identify which services it wants to tender and they'll need to make a decision, which I assume the task and finish group will make on. This is the shortlist on the home list. And then post that decision at December committee, there will need to be a delegated decision to, again, I assume, the task and finish group to decide which of the ten services you want to procure. So just to be clear, my assumption, and I've asked for it to be kind of agreed in the paper, is that the task and finish group would have that delegation, but you might just want to confirm that to be clear that the actual choice of which services you use will presumably be made by the task and finish group. And we'll come back in December with a formal paper for spending, which will give that delegation.
I'm happy if you want to bring something to the October meeting to confirm that, you know, just we can report back and.
I think this is the thing.
So, yes, so what I'm asking to me today is just to confirm that the task and finish group will have that delegation. We will bring the paper in December that will have that delegation and make a decision and put that in there. But I just wanted the committee to say how advanced we're off with preparing the paper because it takes a while.
I'm going to move this because I think we need to gather, gain a bit of time back, this last item running over. So I'm going to move it. If anyone wants to second it, I thought you might take that, Tim. Thank you very much. Um, Dom, are you moving it as well? Did you want to say something?
No, no.
The second, okay, so moved and seconded. Can we all agree the paper, including the delegation to the task and finish group, shortly after our December meeting of the full committee? Unanimous. That was great. We've got some time back. Right, next, Bristol Regional Cycling, Cycling Hub. Um, so this is to comprise the committee of the proposed regional cycling hub in North West London and seek approval for expenditures, business case and submitted full planning application. And bear in mind that this is funding from, over programming, I think, from WACCA on the CRSTS funding. So there's a investment deadline of March twenty twenty seven. So we've really got to expedite this very quickly. Um, and Adam, I'm sure you want to say, or Alex, want to say a few words of introduction?
Sure. Um, this little facility is really important to our walking and cycling offer and how we get people walking and cycling across the city. So I always say we spend millions and millions of pounds on farm act, creating cycle routes and such like. But the work that our teams do around cycle training and getting people cycling in the first place is really critical to encouraging people to cycle throughout their lifetime and the cycle centre is really at the heart of that. This facility will be much improved, much larger, with lots of different offers that can be provided. It's not going to be our only offer. We still have cycle training that we deliver across the city from the cycle training teams. So that has continued, but it's an additional facility which will provide a lot of facilities, I think, to make use of. What we're asking for approval for is to accept funding from the combined authority to carry out the outline business case and the full planning application. And we will then at some point see additional funding for them to complete full business case. So we're asking for approval to carry on through that process. We then bring full business case back to committee for approval or not at that stage. That'll be following the planning application and you'll then have opportunity to approve or not approve the scheme. And as it says, the, sorry, as it says, the funding comes from the CRSTS later programming pot, which is a pot that's been created from funding for CRSTS schemes that are not proceeding or not spending as much funding. And we do have to hit the March twenty seven deadline, which is by restructuring in this way so that we can move forward as quickly as possible with the scheme development and design process. That it will be an additional opportunity to approve or not approve the scheme once full business case is created. Is this approved or is this completed? And the full business case is a much smaller piece of work in this case than the outline business case and the full planning application because a lot of work goes into those, into those two elements. And we're obviously happy to come back to committee and update on progress throughout the outline business case and full business case process. If that'd be helpful.
Kaz, Dom, Graham?
Yes, well, you know, this looks like a fantastic facility and I very much support it. Um, as you develop the outline business case, maybe sort of look at it not just from, sort of, a pure cycling to a few, but how it could be social inclusion in terms of education for the schoolchildren and the many aspects of cycling like e-bike training. And I quite liked watching the BMX cycling in the Olympics. So I noticed the BMX facility is, I believe, outside but out of the fenced area. So maybe some kind of BMX training or maybe interesting about how that could possibly be integrated. But I'd very much welcome you coming back to us and keeping us updated.
Thanks, Kaz, Dom. Yeah, I took a delegation from WACCA about nine months ago, very, very keen then. Obviously, Family Cycling Centre, we've got now, delivers nationally significant, um, cycling interventions for people who are living with challenges. Um, but it doesn't have the facilities that it deserves and it's going to lose what it's got by agreement many years ago because that's housing that. So, I mean, this is a win-win really. We wouldn't be able to afford, as a city council fund, this. It's situated in a place where a good region, you know, means it's maybe because there's access for more sunset, south loss. And WACCA are very keen to pay for it. Um, so without this, it's difficult to see what the alternative would be for Family Cycling Centre. So I guess this has got everything going, but unbiased, of course, it's my view, but, um, but I can support this anywhere, I think.
Thanks, Tom. Um, Graham? Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, the facilities look absolutely outstanding and, you know, well done again, the funds to deliver this. Um, you know, as the person who created the stop at the bike track, um, this is on a different scale, a different, you know, it's huge. It's, yeah, it's something that the city can be proud of. Um, my, obviously, my comment is as a South Bristol ward resident and ward councillor and resident, the loss of another facility from BS fourteen is something which I don't welcome, but I understand that the land is going to be built on anyway. And if there was something we could do to leave some form of provision behind, that would be really welcome. Or at least try and make some mitigations for the loss of the facility when it moves to North Bristol. As a South Bristol councillor, I agree with that. Um, I'm very proud of this because this was still on my watch when I was an officer. And we were given a three-year temporary minimum use of the road track and the site. And actually, one's, for answer, we can celebrate the delays to delivery and passing because it's had eight years to prove itself. It's really proved itself again. I mean, that's not probably, that wasn't meant to be a bar comment. That's just meant to be really celebrating the fact that this has proved itself, a proof of concept. And I have discussed with the team the fact that it is moving a long, long way away. It is almost as far as the south end of the city as it could be and it's moving almost as far north in the city as it can be. And so let's remind ourselves that actual cycle training takes place all over the city all the time through schools. But I have asked for, um, whether, how, as part of the business case development, if we can just think about the service we offer, and in developing the new service particularly make use of the additional outdoor facilities that are coming in growth because there's, I think, some quite high quality, the remains of print of outdoor space is going to have some quite high quality outdoor activities. So whether or not we can, uh, look at, we will definitely look at different models so that it's not a complete loss of service. I don't, I think that's enough said, isn't it, Adam?
Yeah, I'll certainly pick it up with the team and look at what, as the Chair says, um, we do provide cycle training all across the city and what we can do around the area will certainly take our weight in that. And we can report back when we do an update on the, sort of.
So I'm going to move this recommendation that we, I'm not going to read it all out. We've all read the papers. We've heard it described. So I'm going to move this recommendation. Someone might second it? Dom? And so let's move straight to a vote. All those in favor of this recommendation, so that's carried unanimously. Getting a little bit unanimity back into this committee, which is, can only be a good thing, but we're moving on to workplace parking levy. So, um, are we ready to do that? Everything fine? Okay. So this report thinks out the current thinking about how workplace parking levy would work and what we would need to deliver and seek approval to allocate money for the outline business case for the scheme. Uh, is there anything you'd like to say about that, Adam?
Um, yes, I mean, we've set out obviously in paper what we're phasing to do, um, which certainly a number of studies and development of the outline business case, based on my studies. There was some work done previously in two thousand and eleven. That's obviously quite outdated. So we need to think about parking surveys and such like. Um, the proposal would develop workplace parking levy options. And we've cited in the report that possibly the Nottingham model is not necessarily as applicable to Bristol. And Bristol's different to Nottingham, so, um, the feasibility study that was done was looking at a more centralised option with higher charges. So, um, you can see in there the comparison of what a hundred and twenty pound per week charge would compare to, say, compared to parking season tickets, which are around fifty-four to seventy-two pounds per week and a bus pass, which are around sixteen pounds per week. Um, the, what the scheme achieves is twofold. It's partly about, um, carbon emissions, et cetera, and air quality by getting people to change mode. But it's also about generating income to invest in transport network, which has significant benefits. Nottingham has seen huge benefits from the workplace parking levy in terms of the amount of money it's leveraged from government in addition to the money that the workplace parking levy generates. So the report will look at those options and then we'll recommend a approach which the OEC will carry out. And we can then come back to committee at the end of the OEC, seek approval for that OEC. Um, the proposal currently is to seek money from the Clean Air Zone to fund the development of the outline business case. Um, and then we'll come back to committee and seek additional funding at that stage. If the scheme went ahead, that money could be refunded into the council pot from the proceeds of the scheme.
Um, so anyone like to make any comments about this? Joss?
Firstly, can I ask, um, this, we're talking about getting more information at this stage. So we haven't made any, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm happy if I've missed it in the papers. We haven't made a decision about what the, the cutoff point is for number of parking spaces. Um, so that's all that needs to be done. of parking spaces. So that's all that needs to be done, worked up. That's, I didn't think I'd missed it in the papers. The other thing that I am very keen to see is that that money's ring-fenced so that we actually know what the money is being used for and where it's going. And it's going to actually benefit. And we have to see those tangible benefits within that area for those, whether it be the tram, whether it be extra, whether we have designated buses, whatever. But we need to see, it needs to definitely ring-fence and we can actually see where that money is going and what it's doing and the good that it's doing. So if you want to comment.
I was going to just, something I forgot to mention at the beginning is, so one of the, above the clerks, if people drawing their comments and joining the debate have any kind of what ifs, yes buts, how will the scheme operate, all those concerns, to just note them down. We won't necessarily probably minute all this, but it can help the officers, the most we may available to the officers to make sure that we've got all the concerns about how would it operate, what if something happens, you know, yes but, what about this? So the first one, you've already answered. One, which is, what is the cut-off point for the number of car parking spaces for an individual premises? So that definitely, definitely, definitely needs to be part of the study, I think, of any way. And the other thing that I hope I shouldn't mention right at the beginning is that on the next situation, the forward plan will be bringing forward a proposal for an investment plan for not just this, but any monies that are coming. For example, we know that the DFT is already encouraging people to think about CRSTS too. So I've asked officers to prepare an investment plan to help us shape the priorities of this committee. That will be coming probably not until the new year, but it's definitely on the forward plan now and some thinking is going into that. So that is one of the points where, yes, this by law has to be ring-fenced for transport improvements. And yes, I think it's absolutely right that this committee should have shaped a longer term plan of how we want to use investment that is made available to us, either through revenue we can generate ourselves or through revenue that may be coming down from central government. And certainly, one of the proposals would be that this could be match funding or ongoing kind of revenue support or capital things. So for example, if we were to start by thinking using the pounds of more easily, very well, the pounds of more easy to transfer to buses or even to take over bus companies, it's not clear where the money would come from. This could certainly be part of that package of support for actually taking greater control of the buses. And that's something that we'll be discussing as part of the forward plan and part of the investment plan. So hopefully that helps to answer your questions, Jos. I don't know if you, before I go to Don and Emma, if there's anything else you wanted to add to that, Adam?
Yeah, I was just going to confirm that it's a legal requirement of the chair in order to set out what you're going to spend the money on. So committee will want to be involved, obviously, in setting that up and being very clear without completely tying it up because you need some flexibility, but being clear what the funding would be spent.
And I'd certainly like to think that one of the options is if there is any offer of significant funding in line with, for example, the National Infrastructure Commission's desire to see improved rapid transit in Bristol, that this could be a match funding to some of that central funding, for example. But all of that would come out in the thinking that's just been initiated in terms of investment point. So.
I mean, as the Highways Authority have departed, I speak and I think and I say that they have many years, for many years pointed out that they're struggling to fulfill their step three requirements in terms of maintenance of structures of roads, of footpaths, et cetera, et cetera. Whilst we may have great, great plans, that will, this will come soon and there's always a piece to be respected because there are many, many people who do poor payments and do suffer from the high infrastructure. Yeah.
That's going to be natural to your demand on these funds.
As a worker, I just thought I'd tell you what you were going to hear.
And I think it's just next week that Sean, his mate, is going to be taking us through an informal briefing about the life cycle monitoring we do to look at the maintenance of some of the aspects.
It is quite frightening, actually, what we aren't doing, what we aren't able to do.
Yeah. And we've seen that already with the need for urgent remedial measures that is affecting your road as we speak. Emma?
Thank you. It's no surprise I'm very in favour of this, but I don't worry when we lose it. It's a big piece of work because it's a new thing. I mean, we had debate about parking that already exists and, you know, charges that already exist. This is a new levy and we're going to have to get the business community on board and help them see the benefits of that because we're asking them to buy into our vision of carbonising the city and getting them on board with that and playing their part. And so that's going to be a really important task, I think, is to show them the benefits. And what Don and Emma just said about, you know, this money could get eaten up so quickly by all the things we want to do. We can't just say, oh, it's going to provide this, that and the other. That being said, Nottingham is known for its wonderful transport. You know, it's had other financial challenges around, you know, as many local authorities do, but their transport is considered excellent. And that is in part down to having this workplace parking levy. That was implemented quite a while ago and the money they have raised from that, you know. And so one of the things I hope we can sell this on is people are going to want to work in a city that has that some transport. So I think we need to really get moving with this now. And I would really, really urge that we, yeah, we get moving and get it started as soon as possible.
Thank you, Chair. As one of the original movers of the Green Plough motion to introduce the workplace parking levy November twenty thirty-one, I can't emphasise how quickly we need to move on this. It is a very slow process. We'll have to involve Westminster to invoke acts of parliament to enable us to do this. And we need to get our ducks in a row as quickly as possible. We can't delay this at any point from enabling this vote on the spoken to committee. So we need to move as quickly as possible. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, just to echo what was said about targeting this money. I hear what Don's saying, but if we want people to accept what you're planning to do here, they have to see the benefits of it. We talked about carrot and stick earlier. People have to start seeing what the benefits are of money coming from something like that very quickly. You can't raise the money and then ten years later deliver improvements. It will be, you know, disastrous in terms of the way people perceive it. So I totally agree with that. Nottingham, as Emma says, has got a fantastic public transport system, including the publicly-owned bus service. I'm wondering whether there would be any chance for any members of this committee to go and sit with the people in Nottingham who run that service and, you know, find out a bit more about what they've done at some point, in a cheaper way as possible, obviously. But maybe, maybe Chair, that's something we could, we could consider at some point.
Having looked at the National Highway Satisfaction Survey results for a number of years, I've noticed that Nottingham is always ten percentage points quicker than any other major city. They're doing something like, obviously, adult social care is a problem as it is for all of us and they've had their financial worries. But I would be very happy to take away action to see if we can, see if we can organise a trip and try and get members who are interested onto the cheapest form of transport we can to get ourselves to Nottingham and seek ourselves. And I'm grateful that, I think, actually, you can read all you like about how good a transport system is, but actually seeing it, feeling it and understanding it for yourself is extremely important. There's a lot of happy faces in on the front row thinking about this outing trip, sudden tour, I think we've been called this. So I've got a lot of words to read out now because it's the recommendations, which is, okay, so I'm going to sort of paraphrase, but you can read them for yourselves, which is approved subject to suitable resource being available, says not to delay the implementation of CRSTS programme or other programmes of progression to state on development of the outline business cases of a cost of up to one million pounds. Approved testing options through a workplace parking levy and potential benefits and issues those options would create an even more informed decision to be taken as to whether to proceed to a full business case and potential subsequent delivery of workplace parking levy. Stage on development of outline business costs to be funded through CAS funding to be repaid from subsequent income generated through the scheme, assuming, of course, it goes ahead. And it authorises an executive director in consultation with the Chair, Transport Connectivity, to procure extended bearing award contracts necessary for implementation of state on the workplace parking levy in mind when procuring the growth. And any subsequent extensions or variations specifically defined in the contracts being included up to the maximum budget end of the outline in this report. So I'm going to move that recommendation, which is in four parts. Can.
Sorry. In layman's terms, how much are we approving to spend at that moment? Is it?
Up to one million pounds, it says. That's what it says.
Without anyone coming back to this committee to show us the working so far?
Well, I'm aware that there's a legal amendment on this, so shall we just, I'm proposing this. Shall we second it and then you can introduce, introduce what you.
That was the point about, because we're sat there with some concerns.
So would someone like to second this? Thank you, David. So, Don, do you want to make that point?
Well, Tim can make that point because it's part of our discussion earlier.
Yeah, just to say that we've looked in quite a lot of detail at the Nottingham report and the stages set out in it. And I think we've taken there, stage one, stage two, stage three. But given the amount of money that could be committed here, up to a million pounds before we get to the point of saying, actually, this, we think this will work and raise us a lot of money, or actually, we're not going to do this because we, you know, the numbers don't add up. So we've looked at it and we're proposing that we split that into two stages so that we have the first three stages that were in there, stage one, which is set out in that Nottingham document, do that work, and then come back at that point and get approval to move on to the next stage. We've estimated an amount which I'm expecting Adam to kind of say, well, you've underestimated or you're about right. I don't know where. But basically, the principle is just to have another point in the process before we get to spend a million pounds and go, actually, we're not going to do this.
Adam, do you want to comment on that and particularly the, what financial do we should set on that?
So those elements, they're not entirely provided in my act. It's like project management throughout the project and such like. I think that you could put in an amount that was less than half a million, certainly for the first stages, if that requires committee approval and going to another committee. That will introduce a couple of months of delay in the process because we have to get stuff ready by, well, in advance of the committee. The outline business case, full business case process is doing that in that it gives you that opportunity after the outline business case to make decisions to whether we're going to the full business case. We'd also be very happy if this would, if this would kind of enable the amendment without necessarily formal committee approval to have informal briefings at those stages to say this is where we've got to. And you have the Chair's delegation to then be approving the scheme as it goes ahead. We could package something up to that amount. I would have to probably go back to the people that wrote the report and say, how can we grade this down to get a kind of formalised amount that would make sense? Because as I say, there obviously can have to be further down around the project management and such like. So, yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, I think, I think really what we're looking at is whether we can sort of see the numbers in terms of this is how many parking spaces we think there are, this is how much we think we can charge, this is how much revenue we'll bring in, that kind of thing, before we actually design the actual scheme and start doing all that work. Because it may be at that point we think it's not worth it.
The one in Nottingham that was quoted, but the one in Leicester fell apart. It was very difficult. I mean, the politicians involved. You know, there was opposition from unions, opposition from a number of people. But it is good actually to take this a little bit slowly, engage with people on the way, because maybe if you spend a lot of money and the outcomes then would not be acceptable. So I think that's just what we're trying to say by this amendment, is let's not pull our eggs in one basket and then all get disappointed because we all see that there's possibilities here. But none of us want to spend a lot of money and not get to something that is useful for the city. If someone wants to call me, you know, this amendment. Cas, sorry, you wanted to speak as well? Okay. Seconded, Tim. I'm going to say that from my point of view, Nick Coombs at our last meeting said that he was unhappy about moving straight to full business case. And I'm agreeing on that particular instance because of delays in the CRSTS programme on the funding cliff, we have agreed to go straight to full business case. I think it is good practice to go to outline business case before going to full business case. And that's what we're asking for in the unamended motion here. So I don't think it's normal that we would break the outline business case into a whole number of checks and balances, but I accept that's what you want to do. I think that could, I know from offices, it takes weeks to get a paper through all the decision pathways coming to this committee. So what I'm, I'm going to say that the key decision we should be making is to go for an outline business case. And I'm suggesting, however, in recognition of the checks and balances you're asking, that we would break this down into a series once we've started and procuring and the project managers on board, we'd break this down into a series of stages and formally put updates, formal updates onto the forward plan of this committee in line with the project stages. And as you move through different project stages and get to the full outline business case, there's always a chance for this committee to halt it if they don't think it's going according to plan. So I think we, as we've said, this is something that's going to take time and we need to attack it with vigour. And I would like to offer a mitigation of the concerns you've addressed by making sure that on the forward plan, there's clear checks and balances and that I oversee all the steps and bring back appropriate, appropriate checks and balances at that time so that we can stop the project if it's clearly ongoing.
And communicate it outwards so that people don't feel something's sprung on them.
Absolutely right.
Accordingly, and we'll get to it next.
Yes, so that, by bringing that onto the forward plan in a formal way will make sure that we're getting those checks and balances. And as you're absolutely right, the business community is concerned. It's just another way of raising taxes and levies. And we need to make sure that, sorry, I'll just finish. We need to make sure that we're bringing the business community with us because that's on the statute.
There's also teachers, hospitals, and some people are very vulnerable at London with most, as for the Leicester case, and indeed Nottingham, another both situations for the political party. Those have both been quite challenging. In one case, people brought round, in another case, people weren't brought round. So it is a real challenge and it must be taken seriously, that.
I agree.
That engagement, honest engagement.
And that is very much one of the what ifs. What if we, you know, I see an explicit teachers or NHS staff is one of the things that, Clark said, we can just make sure that we're concerned about social care, NHS and education and in particular, the effect on early market employment there. Cas?
Yeah, my concern is, as my amendment suggests, we've been asked to commit to one million pounds. One million pounds is a lot of money. So I think all I'm asking is, we're happy to maybe commit to a, about half or wherever it might be, but not to full one million. And yes, we want to sort of see regular updates for the reasons we mentioned. I know the reason why I mentioned lots of them, but as Don has mentioned, there's Leicester, there's also other cities that don't have a workplace parking levy, Sheffield, Cardiff, Newcastle. London's got a workplace parking levy, but you have good public transport systems as you do in Manchester. And for me, I just need to understand the updates, as you mentioned, the previous study, the Aking study. I'd much appreciate those. So there's all sorts of reasons why I feel you're better off just maybe committing here to a lesser sum of money rather than the full one million pounds.
Tim, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was going to say, just, just as long as we, as long as we're clear that there will be points. Yeah, I was going to say, just as long as we're clear that there will be points in that process where we can say, no, we don't want to proceed and we don't want to spend any more money from that point onwards. But also, I just wanted to clarify that we will see different options. An option that covers these groups of people, an option that covers these groups of people and an option, so that, you know, because we have specific red lines in terms of people we don't want to see affected by this. So it won't just be when all the numbers come back to the person in the report, it won't just be one option, there will be, you could do this or you could do that.
That's a good answer. So the way I would envisage it is there will be like a strategic option and amidst that, there will be lots of options of you could apply to this, you could not apply to. So Nottingham didn't apply to businesses with good term parking spaces, for example. Now Nottingham was a citywide proposal. If you had a city centre mark, for example, that'd be a different, a kind of different approach, which we think is probably more realistic for Bristol because of the way the city is and where all the workplace parking spaces are and those places don't. The other places that had workplace parking spaces, like out in Ava Mount, are hard to get to and with shift working, this is more challenging. So we'd probably set out a strategic proposal and then within that, there would be, are you in charge NHS, are you in charge teachers, are you in charge business, let's set spaces and the assessment of impacts that would have.
Thank you, Chair. You know, we can, as any surprise to anyone, I will be supporting workplace levies as well as principle. But I do think with any project that we undertake, we can't determine, you know, how much money we're going to limit ourselves at the outset. Because I think we've got a history in the city of not spending enough at outset and ending up with massive bills for the down the line. So I'm not saying whether half a million pounds is appropriate, two hundred thousand or a million pounds is appropriate. I don't know. But those checks and balances will be really important, not just on this, but on anything that we're going to be looking at for the future in terms of project work.
Chair, can I point out that on the first October, we will not be dropping a million pound in somebody's pocket and say delivers a project. We will be monitoring this really closely and in terms of its outputs. And if we decide that a report back comes to this committee that is no longer viable to actually produce a workplace parking levy, we will stop it. We are pragmatic enough and alert enough to actually understand that. And if you look at the way that transport projects, particularly on the final report to this committee about underspend on transport projects, we have lots of money to actually spend on this project. We probably wouldn't even necessarily need to go to the CAS with the amount of underspend. We've got some delivery major type of transport projects. We should be delivering this as soon as possible, but we need to put in adequate checks and balances. And I agree that, but we need to do it within 12 months. Thank you.
So I'm going to just make sure we've got formally manifested that we will be putting in checks and balances and formal reports back to this committee in line with the project plan when particular products are ready. And I am concerned that, yes, we can separate out some of the individual work streams, but actually, they need to be overlaid. Because as we start looking at the boundary, at the exemptions, at the scale, we also need to be looking at the economic impact and we also need to be looking at the other impacts as well. And I think those things are very hard to disentend also. So I'd rather get all the work streams running and then have formal checks and balances in line with the project plan and recorded on the forward plan for this committee to oversee the project proper. Emma?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm nervous about as least the momentum with this. You know, it was on the table, off the table, it's come back again. It's going to take long, it might even take longer than we hope, because that's what happens. You know, we've learned from that with many different projects. And they're wonderful when they come to fruition. And I'm going to say, actually, their own train station is coming in two weeks. But, you know, that's an example of something that's great, but it takes time because of so many other factors, doesn't it? So I think building in too long pauses and building in breaks, that concerns me. I think we've got to sort of commit to something and do it and show people what it can be. That's the joy of doing it all at once, is that you start to show people rather than sort of dwelling just on the concerns. You've got to show them the outcomes of it. And so I do think we need to be a bit brave here and just sort of go for it. You know, but I do understand caution, you know, we do have a lot of consultation, things that do fizzled out. But I think you've, I get you, some things fizzling out and you should just really go for it now. It's been long enough.
I don't see any other hands up, so I'm going to move to the vote on the amendment, which is to, I'm not going to read it all out.
I think I'll have your votes on, shall I?
Okay. So do you want to adjourn them or just have a little?
Do you want to adjourn them, please? I think some of them are concerned they're a group associated with the subject.
I agree with that comment, so I think we can definitely check this as we go along. And I'm definitely not against that, I agree with what I've said.
Okay, can we just keep the, I also know this is a formal adjournment, what, two minutes? So there's a, well, there's a proposal to adjourn for two minutes. Do you want to second that? Yes, and can we all just agree that now? Yeah, okay. So two minutes starting now.
Oh, no, of course, they can change their mind.
Just because it's got to be a lot of western, obviously, but that's a very far place, far away place.
Englewood is very far away, it's a lot of western.
They're round in circles on that one.
It makes sense because they have both, you have facilities there.
Not quite sure how it works right now, it's already been discussed.
Is the council?
I think so, yes. It's family time, I think. I've got the track, it's like a ball. It's a sound run of the game. Yeah, one thing, it's a big pass. Go around. Nick just said that he's full. He's definitely in the Englewood Castle. But it gets going out of right of mind.
It's very important for it's western is the land that it's having, it's kind of the avenue of the day. So it's a hard, that's where, I don't know, desperate place. Also, there is a few electric power that's got like a central status. And I suppose it's quite a good fit and it's good for the local community, it's quite a lot of house around. It's not like, you know, it's not going somewhere.
Okay, and bring this back, yeah.
I'm not saying.
Yeah, it'll be western, it's going to western.
Yeah, it'll be too expensive to put there. The land is too expensive. As I was saying, I. This is a lot of western, this is we're almost like about to do a lot of that there. It's a real shame.
So just to clarify, I've four minutes, I've made a formal commitment that one of the first tasks as a project manager, and this has been agreed by Adam and you can let me comment afterwards if you need to, that one of the first tasks as a project manager will be to set this series of gateway reviews for the project, which will be perfectly normal, or stage boundaries, which would be perfectly normal practice for any project. And we will embed them formally on the forward plan. That will give us the ability not only to look, it will be for information. So that is a much quicker process than making a key decision. If at that point, there's a lung bells ringing, then we will deal with it at that point. And if need be, then we may have to pause the project and bring a key decision about anything. But for the moment, effectively, the way a key decision works is it takes eight to 10 weeks to go through a decision paper, all the checks and balances, all the paperwork to be done, policies, impacts and everything like that. That means it will slow the project down and actually will get much more up to date information for action, the information on key decision points. So I'm making a commitment, I can't say whether it's going to happen at the next meeting because it's going to take time to get going, but it will happen as one of the first tasks of the project leadership, to sign different stages, put a date on them and make them part of the forward plan. If the project is subject to delays, then we'll push it back on the forward plan, but it will still be on the forward plan as something that is very much organised. So that's the commitment I'm making, four minutes, and I don't know if I'd agree with you.
Yeah, that's fine, we can then provide much more up to date information. We can bring appropriate points, make useful information when we're at those stages and discuss it, comment on it, and then it's for you and the chairs to decide whether you want to go ahead or not. And if you, yeah, if we're not going to go ahead, then we'll write a formal decision paper.
Okay, thanks, Chair. Yeah, on that basis, we're happy to withdraw our amendment.
Okay, so shall we go to the unamended, I'm not going to read it all out, okay? We've done it once already, but the unamended motion, so all those in favour of authorising this project to begin? That's eight. Against, one. That's carried, thank you very much. Right. I wonder where we're at now, we've got 10 minutes left on the formal agenda. Can we, I've allowed 10 minutes to each of these, to the financial forecast report and the corporate risk report. So we may run over by a few minutes, but we've got through an awful lot of work today. Don't worry, but the financial forecast report may have rather altered, but then it was agreed that we did have a capital and revenue budget agreed by full council in February 2023. This report presents the Transport Connectivity's latest financial report at period three, which I guess is the end of June, against the budget, yeah, in June 2024. It was an exceptional reporting month, meaning the council only reported material changes in the forecast. So you've seen the paperwork, I don't know if there's any quick remarks that anyone would want to make from an officer's point of view. But I think we should assume that everyone's read the report and is probably ready for any questions.
I was merely going to summarise the paper, it's not a decision paper. And the year we're betting that we can answer any questions, so.
I'm going to assume that everyone's read it, it doesn't need a summary. Is there any questions for Ben, who's, you have met him, so Ben is here, he's the finance business partner, with the leader, how is he, that's my senior finance person we can have in the room. So any questions you would like to ask David?
Thank you, Chair. So some questions about the table, page 255, about expenditure. So the current year FY2024 period three is equivalent to Q3 of the financial year. Yeah, so that means we've got one quarter to spend nearly fifty one million pounds. Am I reading the table right?
Sorry, that's period three, so that's at the end of June, so that's after one quarter.
It's after one quarter, oh, that's why I'm making, being confused. So after one quarter, you've spent 10% of what you need to do.
Yep.
Right, so in the next three quarters, you've got to spend the extra other 90%. All right, now I understand, the period three, it was implied to me that it's quarter three as opposed to period three. Apologies for that understanding. So do we think it's feasible to spend 90% of that budget in those remaining three quarters? Or will there be more underspend? I'll rephrase my question.
Well, obviously, it's a challenge. I would say that, to copy Adam's point, when we often talk about these issues, is that a number of these programmes are grant funded and that our grant process follows a slightly slower timeline. So it's probable that we may have spent somewhat more than this at that point in time. We just haven't claimed the money through WACCA largely to make it up. So there's always a slight delay of our capital programmes. But you also say historically, you fall short against our expected spend here on euro capital. And there's a wide variety of worktrails, working on that at the moment to try and improve our forecast. And I think perhaps period six, we should be coming back with a revised capital forecast, having seen the spend to date and most likely lowering the number of budgets to reflect what we actually will spend a year. Thank you. Emma? I think it's in the long way, hasn't it? Thank you, Ben. Shall we move on to the corporate risk reports? Report, any comment? I think, again, unless there's any, absolutely, a thing you absolutely need to say in summarising this, but I think.
I get you, Ben, it's not a decision paper, it's certainly not the, we're so happy to try and answer any questions.
That's great. I've got one actually, which is, we've been looking at CRSTS, we know WACCA level, they're so worried about the spend programme that they're asking for over programming. And we've actually agreed something to date from the over programming. This is one of the biggest funding settlements we've ever had in this region for sustainable transport, five hundred and forty million pounds, roughly half of which is coming, roughly half of which is coming to Bristol. So two hundred and something million pounds is coming to Bristol. We're now quite a long way through it, probably, I believe we got until March 2027 to invest it. What that means is we're not only, I think, a little bit behind the very part we'd like to be in terms of CRSTS, but we're also going to be doing multiple interventions, possibly across the city all at the same time. I think this is quite a big risk. And I'd like officers at least to think about whether or not this is a risk. We should be getting, sort of, recording, looking at and assessing. And I would expect that this is the sort of thing that would meet the threshold. And I think from my experience of the combined authority, scrutiny, they're very worried about the delivery against this programme. So then seeing this escalated to be a corporate risk and the mitigations we want to put in, both in terms of the spend profile and in terms of the delivery profile and making sure we can keep the city running. I think it wouldn't be a bad thing at all for that risk to be actively managed and for the combined authority to be seeing it being actively managed and coming up to this committee as something that we're keeping an eye on. Don, you probably have a quite complex array of potential blockers actually on delivery of the capital programme. One can be a number of officers that we've got, another can be network management problems, like the Duncan's, a piece of work on, just trying to put together how the network is going to continue given what we've already agreed to, but in terms of development management and applications. My apologies, as well as our bridges and our highway stuff.
My apologies. As well as our bridges and our highway stuff. So, yeah, it is quite complex. As someone who's dealt with bridges and missed bridges for a couple of years, very unpredictable. And, you know, you can work like stink. I've I was overseeing people that were really great and working very hard. And actually, things have just gone wrong and things have not, it wasn't their fault. And things just didn't get delivered like it took another turn. Planning permission doesn't get given from historic structure. Not your fault. It's frustrating when you're not in this authority. Sometimes it just happens. So it is a complex picture of why things don't get delivered. It isn't that people can't afford it. Never seen that factor.
I wasn't trying to suggest any criticism of the nature.
Has been suggested by people and is often inferred. From my experience, that has never been one of the factors.
Would you agree, though, that this is a huge programme and the spend profile and the delivery profile needs really active management? I think it would, we're going to ask the officers to just revisit this risk and see if it comes into the threshold to be reported back to this committee.
Yeah, but I think you will need to pin down what aspect as a safe of risk that you want. I know that the network management are working on the network. That's probably the biggest risk, actually. But there are other things like just not having the staff in place to be able to deliver the stuff, even though we're not paying for it. We need those people on the ground and we can't advise them to recruit sometimes.
CAS, Rob, David, and then same as the right hand.
Just a brief comment. I've spent many hours doing risk analysis in my past job and it was always the most enjoyable part of the job, not. But I just wondered, in terms of updating this risk analysis, what kind of frequency is it done on? Is it quarterly or quarterly?
Rob?
I didn't have to speak.
Oh, sorry, David.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to draw attention to risk, C R R forty three, the lack of progress on mass transit. At the last WAC meeting in July, twenty sixth of July, they approved the strategic outline case for a future for West report and that an outline business case stage will be coming to the September twentieth meeting. And from downloading the report that was published during this meeting, mass trans, future for West has been renamed as West Rapid Transit. So things are moving on this risk and hopefully it can be acknowledged in the next quarter, but things are actually happening in place.
I think it is the one of the things of the committee system is to establish resources first and then is reported on to us. So he's always a little bit behind at times, yes.
Just wanted to respond about the CRSTS project really. We we have secured additional funding, so the combined authority is agreeing for additional resources to manage the network throughout the process of delivering CRSTS. So things like additional network management officers, instruction managers, that sort of thing. And we are also commissioning some work to look at all those wider impacts on the city centre. Because you've got a lot of big developments, you've got the CRSTS programme, a lot of things like Yorke Row, Ploner, et cetera. And so these will, we'll look at how we best coordinate that and what mitigations we can put in place and how we can help the city centre in particular to manage the ongoing works that are going to be coming. In terms of focus, council, I example, that would be my focus. That's where the most consequential traffic impact changes from the CRSTS programme are. And that's where things like major developments are happening. And you've got the program issues like that. So we would certainly look to focus it on that. There are wider issues that will look at with the rest of the programme as well. But the focus would be in that central area. The combined authority have recognised this. They're also very keen to manage that risk. I do think it's beneficial to bring it and discuss it and update as to where we are and what's happening. That would be my recommended approach mainly on the central area.
Yeah, it's clear, I know. So I'll keep this a bit high. But one thing that never appears on this risk register is the risk of really peeing off a lot of local residents by not delivering any of our transport projects through SIL. So I'm just, I just remember at the last meeting, I asked if it could be part of finance reporting going forwards to say how much money we've got allocated to transport projects for SIL. I know we haven't got it this time, but I'm wondering if that's, if we are working towards bringing that along so we can see how much money is allocated to those projects and when they might get eliminated.
Yeah, we do have that, the information on the money allocated. We have been recruiting into the team that delivers those schemes. So the local transport manager has just arrived at the council. We also have the two air engineering managers now in place. We are about to appoint another eight. So staff and then recruit another six or seven staff. So we've got lots of resources coming in. That's not going to mean the schemes will get done immediately. But it will enable us to give you better updates, keep you more up to speed and to start accelerating delivery of some of those, some of those projects. So what I would suggest is the local area SIL will be one element. There's also the CAS allocation for local transport schemes as well. So we'll look to provide the kind of best overall way of providing that information to us, committee members or local councillors on a wider, wider basis.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Chair. So just on CRSTS as well, there's nationally expenditure, of course, various combined authorities is relatively low. This region has caught up significantly in recent months and there's been a lot of good work in additional capacity building, more consistency around reporting of the various, of the three unitary authorities with with the combined authority. So I think things are improving, but we're very, very mindful of the need to hit March twenty seven. And I think we'll continue to work with combined authority to ensure that we maximise our chance. In relation to the updating frequency, I mean, we update our risk registers all the time. I suppose it's more about the cycle of coming through reporting, but it's quite a dynamic process. And there are obviously more risks on our risk register than you see in front of you. It's about what it's of a certain score. But I think it's absolutely correct that you mentioned CRSTS and seeing that on the profile. I think that's absolutely right. And of course, we've got all controls in place we can talk about as well. In terms of mass transit, you're quite right as well. They're clearly, what are we calling it, rapid, rapid west, west rapid transit. I feel there's been some recent progress. So that's, I think that's really positive.
I've seen in, I think in the trade press, that various other combined authorities are suggesting to the D F T that they might take off the arbitrary of March twenty twenty seven. If there is a concerted effort to do that and officers are worried about that and want to support Bristol or the Western combined authority adding their weight to those measures.
Just to say, I did ask WAC about that at the WAC audit meeting last week. And their view is that they don't take their foot off the pedal because, you know, but they haven't had any, any informal indication at the moment that that's going to happen. So they're they're sticking absolutely to their deadlines.
We've absolutely got.
It makes sense.
We've absolutely got to keep delivering the de-risk programme across the whole country if there was a, it does seem to be an arbitrary deadline set by the D F T to possibly keep people who come in more time to to invest the money. I am going to say thank you very much for, we've covered a lot of ground and I think we've also created a certain amount of work for ourselves. So in the future, so we both cover ground and maybe we'll be looking at the forward plan and how we make decisions again as soon as we possibly can about the budget. Thank you all for a very active and interesting meeting. And I'll see you all again on, it doesn't actually say on my script, I mean, it does it. Sorry. I'll see you all again on Thursday, tenth of October, October at five P M. Good evening to you all.